I will call the special town council meeting to order on February 13th at 5:03. Mayor Mark Suker.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brett Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Oxmaker.
Present.
Councilmember Luke Wagner.
All right, I don't think we need to say anything. Carolyn, I think we just need to hear what you want to say.
We still need the motion to go into executive session.
Pardon?
We need the motion to go into executive session.
Okay, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of conference with an attorney for the town for the purpose of receiving legal advice on a specific legal question under CRS 2464024B relating to legal considerations of annexation of the Ladera Phase II property owned by Connel LLC.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Host, we are now in executive session.
Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move to adjourn the special Tinenc Town Council meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned.
Call the February 13th meeting to order. Mayor Mark Suker.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brett Hanson.
Okay, any amendments to the agenda, Erin? Public comments?
General public comment starts with Bill Jenkins.
Bill Jenkins, 5507 Sugarloaf Court. Good evening. I'm speaking about item 6J and it's really-
Bill, do you want to wait till we get to that for a public comment?
Do- no, not really. Because there is no public comment.
I mean, I'd like to get it out of the way because-
Okay, go ahead.
Or-
Go ahead.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm interested in speaking on item 6J and its relationship to transparency, public engagement, trust, and integrity. The following references are from the January 16th Planning Commission meeting. Despite the Ladera annexation agreement stating that there were no other agreements pending related to the annexation, despite Carolyn White, attorney for the applicant, indicating they withdrew all of their requested terms and there are no special terms and conditions, and the only thing is the town's standard annexation agreement, despite Commissioner Jost asking, are there any material terms in the annexation agreement that are not in there yet, and despite Kevin Kobel answering, no, this is our standard annexation agreement and there are no terms in the boilerplate agreement. On the same agenda as the final approval of the annexation agreement, the 6J agreement has a clause that makes the agreement contingent on 6G passing. Clearly, the parties knew that the annexation agreement was pending and this 6J agreement would be additional special terms and conditions. This subsequent agreement should have been part of, either part of the annexation agreement or at least part of a public hearing process. This agreement was near its final form, so clearly, the response by staff that there was no other, quote, "special terms" or "conditions" appears to be deceptive and not transparent. Staff could have indicated that an additional agreement with special terms and conditions related to road improvements and funding was being negotiated. I find it odd that this complex agreement is on the same agenda as the boilerplate annexation agreement for both, both for final approval, one with a public hearing and the other without one. This appears to be a planned strategy by staff to avoid scrutiny of the, quote, "special terms and conditions" agreement by the public. While I'm generally in favor of the transportation, if, posed in that agreement, for road improvements, I strongly object to the way it has been handled. The citizens of Timneth deserve and expect and demand a transparent public process. It may be perfectly legal, but appears to be deceptive and not transparent. Thank you.
Melissa?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Craig Armstrong, 6614 Stone Point Drive. In the tract of land, part of Tinmouth Ranch, north, south of Harmony and west of Schoolhouse Road, there is a surprisingly straight line of 62 ponderosa pine trees. They're young and quite healthy, and I say that because when you're young and healthy in a ponderosa pine tree, you can be transplanted with a pretty high degree of success of being put into a new hole. So, I'm here to see if it'd be possible to save some or even all of those healthy pine trees. Some of the possibilities might be considering a few more of the ponderosas on Schoolhouse Boulevard. There are some there now, but they're fairly sparse. Putting a few in the new small park in the green space being designated for this new development of 507 units, I realize you want to keep that as open as possible, but one or two or three trees in a corner might be quite a nice addition. Possibly putting some around the detention ponds. And on the east side of Mills Brothers Landscaping Yard, there are some of the ponderosa pine, but quite frankly, they don't really hide the mess, to be candid. They could use a few more right there. If one moves a tree less than a quarter mile, 15 feet high, that costs about $1,200. That's what the retail price is to move a tree and transplant it. So, if it were possible to save even 10 or 20 of those 62, I think it would be really kind of a fraction of what it's going to cost to put in 507 new units. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Armstrong. I'm going to make a suggestion that you meet with Matt, who takes care of those things, and, and give him your good suggestions.
Thank you, Mayor.
We also did receive two letters from Mr. Hollenbeck, but he has also signed up to speak later on.
Okay.
So, we will include his letters in the minutes.
Great, thank you. Is that it? Okay, thank you. Consent agenda. Anybody have any questions on it? Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented in the packet.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved unanimously. Reports, council, anybody? Okay. No reports. Business, ordinance number four, series 2024, an ordinance amending the town budget for the budget year 2024. Lisa?
Good evening. This is an ordinance amending the budget, increasing the appropriation by 120,000. This was discussed during a work session on January 9th. The request was made by the new Public Works Director to move up an engineering staff position that was previously projected in 2025 to 2024 to help with the transition from contracted staff to in-house staff, and also additional $50,000 in traffic consulting costs. We do anticipate about 50% of the staff salary will be offset by savings in the capital improvement plan. So, the request net, like I said, is to increase the expenditures by 120,000 total.
And I think I asked you this question, Lisa, before. I may have it wrong, but this has already been approved in our budget process, correct?
No, this isn't approved in the budget process. This is a supplemental appropriation. We discussed this in, at the January 9th work session.
Oh, this is, okay. Anybody else?
I have a couple, Mark, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, please, Luke.
Well, I just want to say again to the town staff and everybody involved, I definitely want to move up that traffic study in the engineering report as quickly as possible. I just want to make that a priority again. Lisa, one question. So, once we update the budget, does that updated budget go on the website? Or how will we know an updated budget?
We typically don't, but I could put this resolution with the other adopted budget so everyone's aware that it increased by 120.
Thank you.
So, I had to go ahead and do that, Lisa?
Okay, I can do that.
And then I would just ask for the next budget cycle, if we could just have a, put a pin in it and just make sure that our 50% of the salary was, so if we could just have that next time when we talk about FTEs, just to make sure.
Yeah, we'll review that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, do I have a motion?
It's a public hearing.
Whoops. Oh, there is a public hearing, public hearing.
I'll open the public hearing at 6:08. Nobody has signed up to speak. I will close the public hearing at 6:08.
See, I knew that. All right, now do I have a motion to, for approval of ordinance number four, series 2024, an ordinance amending the town budget for the 2024 budget year?
I move to approve ordinance number four, series 2024, an ordinance amending the town budget for the 2024 budget year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Just, real quick, I know we covered this in the work session, but just to put it on the record here, for those who may not have watched, it's odd to be amending our budget literally weeks into the, into the year. But this is a situation where we hired a new Public Works Director and kind of within his first 100 days identified these two needs, and while normally I wouldn't be so quick to amend the budget, I, I think the, the points that he made brought up, made sense, and so I encourage council members to vote for this.
Okay, good comments. Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor of ordinance number four, series 2024, an ordinance amending the town budget for 2024, say aye.
Aye.
Ordinance number four, series 2024, an ordinance amending the town budget for 2024, passed unanimously. Item 6B, ordinance number five, series 2024, an ordinance amending Chapter IV of the municipal court regarding impact fees and updating the associated fee schedules therein. Lisa, also?
Yes, this ordinance updates our public improvement fees based on the study done by BBC Consulting Firm. We've been working with them for over a year now, and we went over these figures in detail at a work session in December. Since then, we've incorporated changes discussed during that work session. We sent a letter in January to the Development Committee, Community, letting them know that this change was coming. We also put it on social media and in newsletters so everyone's aware of the changes. I do have Michael Verdone with BBC here just to do a quick, quick summary of his report, and then we can open it up with questions.
Okay, Michael, I think the key word there was "quick."
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, council members and staff. As you know, I was here in December, so I'll make this very short. The fees that we have produced meet all of the requirements for the state of Colorado and federal case law. They're based on the capital improvement plan that was developed by staff and then working in coordination with staff to identify the growth-related shares of all of the items in that plan, and using that information with the current growth patterns and expected future growth to derive the fees. So, I know you've all seen the schedules, you've seen the comparison table, so if that's quick enough for you, I can stop there.
You did such an excellent job, seriously, on presenting it, that it was very easy to read and, and very understandable, and, and it looked like you did an excellent job. So, my suggestion on "quick" was no reflection on the importance of what you did for us.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I have a quick comment. In the ordinance, there were two missing provisions that had been accidentally left out on a previous recodification of this section that we'd like to add back in. If you look under section 4650, for most of the impact fees, parks and open space, stormwater-
Six, so 4650, do you guys know where that is?
It's page 62-
Thank you.
Of the packet.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, you'll see under subsection B, Parks, Open Space, and Trails, how there's a subsection two that says all fees under, collected under the subsection will be deposited into a separate account and will be an interest-bearing account. Funds can be used only for the purposes specified in this subsection, and expenditures are subject to the provisions of this article. We would like to add similar subsections to, to the police impact fee, which is 4650A, and to the public building impact fee, which is 4650C. So, each of them will have a sub two, so the provision that's in there right now, we've come to sub one, we'll add a sub two that will be identical to Parks, Open Space, except it will refer to the actual fund that we're talking about.
Great, thanks. Public hearing, Lisa?
I will open the public hearing for ordinance number five at 6:14. Nobody has signed up to speak, so I will close the public hearing at 6:14.
Okay. Do I have a motion to, let's see, do I have a motion to approve ordinance number five, series 2024, an ordinance amending Chapter IV of the municipal court regarding impact fees and updating the associated fee schedules therein, along with, Carolyn, do you want to add the amendment?
Yes, along with adding a subsection two on both the police impact fee and the public buildings' impact fee that is similar to the other, to the Parks and Rec impact fee that talks about the restricted use of the funds and being put into an interest-bearing account.
So, who would like to make the motion?
I move, I move to approve ordinance number five, series 2024, an ordinance amending Chapter IV of the municipal code regarding impact fees and updating the associated fee schedules therein with the amendments mentioned by Carolyn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion?
Go ahead, Luke, if you want to go first.
Yeah, I'll go first. Again, I want to thank time spent, thank town staff for the time spent on the impact fees. I do think the work session, to echo Mark, were really helpful. I do appreciate that the comparison to other communities as well, so I thought that was really helpful to get us to that understanding. Just for future considerations, I think I just want to consider more water resources for the town.
Okay, anybody else?
I would echo, I appreciate the work here. Although our impact fees are going up a little bit, we're still very competitive. Our total will be in the 12 grand range, but Fort Collins and Loveland are both 18 grand. The 12 grand is comparable to Windsor and Berthoud, so I appreciate us being competitive there. Also note that several of the impact fees have gone down, including the police impact fee, and completely eliminated the storm drainage fee, so appreciate actually looking at what the needs are and, and not continuing to collect money that, that we don't have a legitimate need for. I will note that as a result of the work session, the CIP allocation for the rec center was changed from $20 million up to $30 million. I think these impact fees that contribute to Parks and Rec potentially could be something that helped us move that eventual rec center project forward, so I appreciate that change that was made. And I do share Luke's concern or question about water. We have allocated in the CIP half a million dollars for water rights and potable water, and, you know, all I keep hearing from other communities are what their process is for water adequacy, they don't have water. Yeah, Greeley did a great job of acquiring rights early on, but everybody else is struggling. I know we don't operate our own water district, but I, I do wonder if, if we're completely covered there. But all in all, I, I think this is great work and I support it.
And I'd like to reiterate exactly what you said, Robert. Excellent job on it. It was real, it was, it was real informative to sit there and be able to see the comparisons, to see the, the town and everything else. So, I love the way your presentation was, and, and it was very, very helpful. So, with that, all those in favor of ordinance number five, series 2024, an ordinance amending Chapter IV of the municipal code regarding impact fees, updated associated fee schedules therein, as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Ordinance number five, series 2024, passed unanimously. Ordinance number six, series 2024, an ordinance adopting procedures for disconnection of land from the town of Timneth. Carolyn?
Thank you. So, this ordinance would add a procedure for disconnection into the land use code of the town of Timneth. Currently, there is no such procedure for disconnection. Disconnection is another word for de-annexation, for when properties want to be removed from the municipal boundaries of the town. In order to petition for annexation, the property needs to be adjacent to the boundary of the town, so we don't have any donut holes, and the petitioners need to, a petition needs to be filed by the fee- And the petitioners need to, a petition needs to be filed by the fee owners of one hundred percent of the property that is petitioning for disconnection or deannexation. And at that point, the town gives notice to any, to the county and any special districts that might be affected, or reviews this at a public meeting, and makes a determination whether disconnection would prejudice the best interests of the town. And if the best interests of the town would not be prejudiced by the disconnection, can, but is not required to enact an ordinance approving the disconnection. At that point, the disconnection becomes effective, and the disconnection, the property is then, for land use purposes, approval purposes, is within the unincorporated county. But if the town had had a tax in place at the time the property was in the town for a specific debt purpose, then they can continue to have a fee that's equivalent to that debt as a middle of even after the property has been disconnected. So that's basically what this is. It's very similar to state statute and follows state statute fairly closely. However, the state statutes do not apply to home rule municipalities, so at this point, the town needed to adopt its own disconnection ordinance.
Thanks, Carolyn. Public comment, Melissa.
I will open the public hearing at six twenty. There's nobody to speak. I will close the public hearing at six twenty.
Mark, I have a quick question. Is it all right?
Sure.
Yeah. Carolyn, I understand that disconnection exists in state statute, and if it exists there, we probably should have it here. But can you give two or three examples of where disconnection would make sense?
Well, I think if, for instance, you had a property that was along the boundaries of the property where they wanted to maybe develop it with another parcel that was adjacent in the county, or there was some other reason why they wanted to have the property not subject to town jurisdiction, that's when they would be petitioning for disconnection. So I kick it to the planners. Yeah, Kevin, do you have any more examples of when this might be?
Yeah, there are some instances around town where there's property that's either split by ditches or other aspects, and where property is in floodplain that's not really developable to where a property owner, there's no value to it to be within the town from that standpoint. These would be on the outskirts, you know, of town from that standpoint of where somebody would, you know, potentially look to disconnect. Or if there was, you know, a property owner that has sat on a property for many years and they don't intend to ever develop it, and they just kind of want to be a county rural type situation, they could ask for a disconnection. Disconnection doesn't, it's not an automatic just by having this in the in the code. Disconnection would still have to come before you all as a council to where you guys would have to weigh in as to, do you see, you know, the benefit to disconnecting, or you still have that latitude to say yes or no, kind of a thing. But that's, those are kind of some examples, and yeah, this is just to bring it into state statute allowances. We were kind of looking through annexation procedures. We noticed that we didn't have the procedure within the town as almost all other jurisdictions have.
So I can understand why a landowner wouldn't want to be subject to all of our rules and regulations and might want to disconnect. What would be the benefit to the town to allowing a disconnection?
If the property is not developable from that, like I was mentioning with, if there was a floodplain over, you know, ninety percent of a property to where they couldn't really develop it, it wouldn't develop anyway, so there wouldn't be, you know, impact fees generated from new development or anything of that sort, or it wouldn't be tax-generated, sales tax-based generating. There's, you know, not written, not necessarily a benefit to the town, you know, from disconnection, but there really wouldn't be a, there would, really wouldn't be a reason not to in some instances. You know, there's not really something that would say, you know, we shouldn't disconnect this property because of these reasons, we need this, kind of a thing. That's where you guys still have the, you know, subjectivity of it. There's not really a disadvantage in some instances like that.
I suppose we don't have to provide services there anymore, so.
Yeah.
Have a dog catcher out or whatever, right?
Yeah, I mean, there would, you know, from things like that, I mean, since we don't have our own utilities, you know, properties could still be served by those respective utility companies, so there really wouldn't be a disadvantage that way either, that, you know, they're not going to be able to be served from that standpoint. It's just, yeah, it's just more of an allowance for a property owner if they have, you know, nonusable property that they could disconnect from the town from that standpoint.
Thank you.
I've got a question, Mark.
Sure, please.
So Kevin, you mentioned they'd come back to council for a vote.
Correct.
Maybe this isn't for you, Kevin, but would there also be a public hearing on that as well, or how would that work?
I think Carolyn's looking at it that way.
Yeah, I think, I see in here a reference to public meeting, but I'd like to actually change that to public hearing in ten, ten point three, because I think the intent was that it would be a public hearing as well.
And then public comment as well, then? Okay, thank you.
Does it have to be the property owner only that initiates a deannexation, or can the town deannex initiate this procedure?
It would have to be the property owner.
Okay.
To request disconnection.
Okay, so if I have a really annoying neighbor, I can't vote them out of the town?
No, not on that one.
Okay, just checking. Thank you.
You don't live next to me. Anything, any other comments in question? Okay, Melissa, public hearing. Did I do one? All right.
Yeah, we already opened and closed it.
Okay, good deal. So do I have a motion for ordinance number six, series 2024, a hearing adopting procedures for disconnection of land from the town of Timneth as amended by Carolyn? What wording do you want in there?
Yeah, changing public meeting to public hearing in ten, ten, three. And it's, it's an ordinance, so it would have to have a public hearing anyway, but we can change public meeting to public hearing.
I move to approve ordinance number six, series 2024, and ordinance adopting procedures for disconnection of land from the town of Timneth as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, do I have any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving ordinance number six, series 2024, and ordinance adopting procedures for disconnection of the land from the town of Timneth as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Six D, resolution number seventeen, series 2024, a resolution approving the Harmony Division, second filing, second amendment, minor division. Chad.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. As you mentioned, this is a minor subdivision application for outlot four of the Harmony Subdivision's second filing. The owner is Harmony RN Holdings LLC, and the applicant is JR Engineering, represented by Ken Merritt. The proposal is a land subdivision creating six or fewer lots, therefore falls within the minor subdivision process. Subsequent step in the development review process would be to submit a site plan for review following an approved minor subdivision application. The subject property is located north of Harmony Road and east of Club Drive within the Harmony Subdivision's second filing, consisting of six point four acres and is zoned commercial mixed use with the PD overlay. The proposal creates one buildable lot with the intent for future development and two tracts to encompass open space, drainage, and access easements. The proposed lot will contain five point four acres and maintains the proposed access from Club Drive. The properties will remain in the CMU zoning district adhering to the Timneth Comprehensive Plan. Staff has reviewed this application against the minor subdivision criteria, the Timneth Land Use Code, the Comprehensive Plan, and the Technical Criteria Manual, and found that it complies with all of the requirements mentioned. Future development within the site again will require future compliance with the town's criteria during that site plan review process. This application was presented to the Timneth Planning Commission on the January sixteenth meeting date, where there was a unanimous vote recommending its approval to town council. Staff therefore recommends approving resolution number seventeen, the Harmony Subdivision's second filing, second amendment, minor subdivision. And I will turn it over to the applicant if Ken has any additional information outside of that.
Evening, Council. My name's Ken Merritt with JR Planners, Engineers, and Landscape Architects. I'll be uncharacteristically brief this evening, since it looks like you have a long night ahead of you. And as Chad has mentioned, the property lies on the northeast corner of Harmony Road and Club Drive. It's approximately six point four acres. The intent of the subdivision, of this minor subdivision, is simply to create two tracts of land, track A, which will be retained as open space. It includes the entry walls and landscaping to the Harmony Subdivision, and track B, which is being constructed as a detention pond for the Harmony filing seventh, which is north of the property, and converting a current outlot to a legal lot, Lot One, approximately five point four acres. I'm happy to take any questions you might have. That's about as brief as I've been in the past dozen years.
I'm impressed. I'm very happy with you. Robert.
Thanks, Ken. Help me understand the why here. Why do we need to divide it in this way? I mean, open space could exist anyways. What's this accomplish?
It's a good question. Well, Harmony LLC, eventually, Harmony RH Holdings owns the entirety of the property. Harmony LLC needs to retain these two parcels for their open, it's not for their open space, they will own and maintain them. So it includes the front entrance of the Harmony Subdivision, which needs to be owned by Harmony LLC, who owns all the tracts within the Harmony Subdivision. And the detention pond in track B is actually being built as part of a network of detention ponds throughout the Harmony Development, but it too needs to be owned and maintained by Harmony LLC. The intent at some future date is to sell the residual parcel ultimately to a different, to a different entity.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Melissa, public hearing?
Yes, I will open the public hearing at six thirty-one. No one has signed up to speak. I will close the public hearing at six thirty-one.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve resolution number seventeen, series 2024, a resolution approving the Harmony Subdivision's second filing, second amendment, minor subdivision?
I will move to approve resolution number seventeen, series 2024, a resolution approving the Harmony Subdivision's second filing, second amendment, minor subdivision.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of resolution number seventeen, series 2024, a resolution approving Harmony Subdivision's second filing, second amendment, minor subdivision, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution number seventeen passes unanimously. Resolution number eighteen, series 2024, a resolution approving the contract for Colorado Jumps Inc., DBA, Airbound for Interactive Entertainment Services. Lauren.
Hi, those of you who don't know, my name is Lauren Thompson. I'm the procurement and contract specialist.
You need to move that down or talk louder, or both.
For those of you who don't know, my name is Lauren Thompson. I'm the procurement and contract specialist here at Timneth now. So Events is requesting a bid waiver to enter into a contract with Colorado Jumps Inc. doing business as Airbound. The town has historically had interactive entertainment services at town events. These include services such as kids' activities like rides, obstacle courses, et cetera, as well as inflatable movie screens for movie screenings. As the town events have grown in size, the price for the entertainment has increased as well. Last year's services from Airbound cost just under thirty-five thousand dollars. With cost escalation, this year's total has come to forty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars. This includes services for multiple town events, including movie in the park, ice cream social, fall festival, and Fourth of July. These are all included in the 2024 event budgets for all of those events. The town has also worked with Airbound for many years. They have proved to be easy to work with, professional, knowledgeable, and safety-oriented. The town has previously attempted to work with other service providers, but found alternative service providers disappointing in regards to services provided and concerning in regards to their lack of commitment to safety. So in order to secure reservations for these services with Airbound specifically on our high-demand event days for 2024 events, the town must enter into a contract with Airbound soon. The town does plan to complete a competitive bidding process for 2025 services, but would like to enter into a contract for 2024 services. Any questions?
Thank you. One thing I don't understand is because I don't understand it, is, oh, Callie, how are you connected with Air Jump? I've never seen that name before.
Airbound is the company that we contract with. They're the ones who we bring in all of our obstacle courses, and we've historically used them at all of our events.
Okay, so you're the, we contract to you, and you contract with them?
Yeah, as the town of Timneth.
Okay. Other question?
I just have a comment. I appreciate you mentioning the the safety concerns that maybe some of the other contractors in the past have have brought about. I would like to see next year go to the bid process, but within that, I'd also like if there are certain businesses at that time that complete the RFP that have had safety issues, I would love for you to bring those up when the contracts come about. This is one of those things that the cheapest might not always be the best. So when that time comes, if we could just be brought maybe some of those names or that information, of course.
Well said. Any others? Brett?
You know, I know we have a pretty strong commitment to doing RFPs, but I think there's more than one way than the official way to do that, and experience working with a company is, I think, certainly fulfilling that requirement, and I want to make sure the mayor's safe when he does some of those extreme obstacles. So I think, yes, I support this, this resolution.
Other comments?
I, I saw this, and I started asking people, how much do you think Timneth spends a year on bouncy houses? And everyone guessed more than fifty grand, so I guess we're getting a good deal. You know, there's, coming up on ten thousand of us in town, if we're spending fifty grand a year on this, I guess we all need to get our five dollars worth. So make sure you get out there and do it.
The events are great, the product, the selection, they've been doing well for us, so I'm comfortable going with them again this year, but I'm really happy to hear that next year we'll put it out to bid.
I'll tell you, I've been involved with events with the Chamber, with Boys and Girls Club, with a number of other type of nonprofit agencies, and Callie is by far the best supervisor and organizer of an event that I've ever been around. So I, we ought to be paying her double rather than what we've got. No ideas, Callie. So that's my two bids. Any other comments? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve resolution number eighteen, series 2024, a resolution approving the contract with Colorado Jumps doing business Airbound for Interactive Entertainment Services?
Move to approve the resolution entitled a resolution approving the contract with Colorado Jumps Inc., DBA, Airbound for Interactive Entertainment Services.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? I just throw out, thanks, Lauren. I didn't make a comment there, but thank you, Lauren, for your work on that. Okay, all those in favor of resolution number nineteen, series twenty? No, resolution number eighteen, series 2024, a resolution approving contract with Colorado Jumps doing business as Airbound for Interactive Entertainment Services, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Resolution number eighteen, series 2024, a resolution approving the contract with Colorado Jumps doing business as Airbound for Interactive Entertainment Services, passed unanimously. Resolution number nineteen, six, let's see, we got six. Resolution Number 19, six, let's see, we got 6F. Resolution Number 19, Series 2024, a resolution approving the Ladera subdivision filing two final plat. Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, this is the Ladera subdivision's second filing, final plat. The owner is Connell LLC and the applicant is Galloway Company. This is just where we are at in the process for this phase of the development. We had already gone through annexation and zoning back in 2021, 2020 and 2021. Sketch plan and then most recently the preliminary plat at the end of 2023. So here we are with the final plat. This property is what's known as the first phase of the Ladera subdivision, generally located south of Swetsville and then just east and west of Whitesl, kind of surrounding the existing floor and decor around the roundabout. This final plat is, proposes 12 commercial lots within the roughly 56, or 50, yeah, 56 acres of the site, which is developable area. The total area is 64 acres, but that does include the entirety of the extension of the Wrightsl Road right of way. The lots within this subdivision will range from roughly one acre in size to just about nine and a half acres in size with eight of the 12 lots kind of generally roughly being around one acre in size. This final plat does meet the open space requirements as they are providing roughly 18 acres of open space, which is roughly 33% of the site. And that open space is going to be on the east side of the site and is more of a natural open space that will include trails, seating and seating areas. And that is due to, and then there's a detention, or there's a pond in that area as well with a trail around it. And that is generally due to the floodplain in the area on that west side of the site. This final plat is in conformance with the recently approved preliminary plat and planned development overlay for the property of Phase 1. Planning Commission did have a public hearing on this item back in, on January 16th and recommended approval by unanimous 5-0 vote. Staff has reviewed this against the approved preliminary plat land use code and technical criteria manual and it meets all of the standards within those documents. With that, I will turn it over to Grant Nelson for a brief presentation.
Thank you, Kevin. Grant Nelson. There we go. Thank you. Grant Nelson, we're here on behalf of Connell LLC and Ladera. Here tonight with my team, my partners, engineers, architects, engineers, attorneys, economic consultants, lots of different consultants. But very excited to be here tonight for the final plat for filing one. Again, we're here tonight, if, I think this is our sixth public meeting. You know, we could get a bouncy house. We could probably get better attendance at these things. So keep that in mind for Kevin in future meetings. The 12 lots, as Kevin indicated, are going to be platted as set forth here. I believe we have, we have, as was reported last week, In-N-Out is on one of the lots, the Lot Block 1, Lot 1, Block 1. We have deals working on Lot 2, Lot 3, Lot 1, Lot 3. So we have a lot of deals moving on this first phase and would really like to get this final plat approved so we can move those deals forward. At the previous city council meeting, I believe Councilman Hanson had asked for a connectivity diagram. So we have provided that to show not only Phase 1, but should Phase 2 come into the annexate, be into the town through annexation, how the different connectivity of the walking, biking, and as you will hear tonight, multimodal, which is the new buzzword in development planning. Multimodal is just how you access sites, either through cars, bikes, pedestrian, or public transit. So lots, lots of different types of connectivity, both walking and walking for pedestrians, biking or cars, lots of different opportunities for connections. And we have tried to think through it to, so that people can get north, south, east, west through the site. As Kevin mentioned, we believe we meet the land use criteria and we believe it meets the plans and goals of the comprehensive plan of the town of Tinmouth. So if, again, if there's any questions, we are here to answer them for you here tonight. Thank you.
We might have you come back then.
Okay.
I mean.
I'll be here.
Let's see. Kevin, did you have anything further you wanted to say?
Nope, and this is a public hearing, Mayor.
Yes, I got it. Melissa?
I will open the public hearing at 6:44. There are no residents signed up to speak on this item, so I will close the public hearing at 6:44.
Thank you. Discussion?
I've got a question for Kevin, for staff there. So I mentioned an In-N-Out there in kind of the top left corner. They're known for a fair amount of traffic. How are we going to be making sure that this lot in the corner of the development does not create a traffic issue?
That is something that is definitely at the top of our list. That site plan application just recently came in. We did have conversations with them at the conceptual level of, you know, trying to get that figured out of traffic. We might consult with our new Public Works Director who has had some experience with that in Loveland. But it is definitely something that we're looking at. We're going to be looking at different options as we go through the site plan process of what traffic would look like for that user.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that there's going to be some extra focus given on that. Now, this site plan, that would not come before the council. That would be the Planning Commission that would.
Correct. That would end with Planning Commission.
So make sure to ask lots of questions, Phil, when you get there. And that's it. That's all I have.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion for Resolution Number 19, Series 2024, a resolution approving the Ladera subdivision filing two final plat?
I move to approve Resolution Number 19, Series 2024, a resolution approving the Ladera subdivision filing two final plat.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution Number 19, Series 2024, a resolution approving the Ladera subdivision filing two final plat, pass unanimously. 6G, ordinance number seven, Series 2024, an ordinance for the annexation for property known as Connell Annexation Number 3. Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is known as Connell Annexation Number 3, kind of also known as the second phase of the Ladera subdivision. Owner, once again, is Connell LLC. Advocate is Galloway Company. So kind of just similarly to the last one, this is the first step in the process for the development process or where we're at of annexation and initial zoning. The, so this is the rest of the Connell property. That is more generally that the northwest corner of Kecter and County Road 5. This annexation consists of two parcels and then adjacent right of way totaling roughly 188 and a half acres currently within unincorporated Alaramore County. This annexation petition has been reviewed against and complies with all local code requirements and the Colorado revised statutes for annexations. I will note that this annexation does contain an existing gravel pit/asphalt plant that is currently in operation. This annexation of the property does not transfer any responsibility of previous permitting or agreements to the town. This use would then become a legal nonconforming use under our land use code as it is an existing legal use within the county. So as it is an existing legal use coming into the town, it just then transfers as a legal nonconforming use just because it has not gone through our code standards to bring it into a legal use. If it were to expand in any way, such as a new structure, different access points, it would then have to comply with all applicable provisions of our code for the use of a resource extraction and update its permit with the state. Also to note, the final reclamation of the property would not become the responsibility of the town by annexing the property. The mining permit was issued and is overseen and administered by the Colorado Division of Reclamation, Mining, and Safety. Annexation does not transfer any responsibilities to the town. The mining permit holder will continue to be responsible for reclamation and the state actually holds an escrow deposit to ensure that reclamation is completed. Any development of the property wouldn't be allowed to occur until portions or all of the property would be reclaimed. There are provisions that allow permit holders to reclaim portions of property to then release it from their overall mining permit so property owners can kind of stage how they want to reclaim property and then ultimately develop it. We did do kind of a little Q and A with the DRMS, which was in your packet, just kind of highlighting some of those responsibilities. You know, questions that have risen about, you know, whose responsibility is it and who oversees kind of their permit? So that was in your packet, kind of detailing that as well. This application, as I mentioned, does include adjacent rights of way and I will turn it to Eric Furman, who will just touch briefly on what that right of way looks like.
Okay. Yeah, it says property and annexation in addition to annexing the property per required statutes is annexing the adjacent right of way, the full width of the right of way so that the roads are not split. The right of way that is being annexed consists of both the historic right of way that was petitioned in 1903 and prescriptive right of way based on where the road is today. If more questions come up later, I can touch on those, but that's what has been annexed as part of this process.
With that, I will turn it over to Grant Nelson for the applicant presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, again, Grant Nelson, on behalf of Connell and Ladera. We'll see how Chad, how fast Chad can get this up. This is an exciting night for Connell LLC, for Ladera, for our team. This property, the remainder of the property being annexed, considering that it has gone back almost 20 years that the town has looked at annexing this property to get here tonight is a, is a big night only for us, but for the town and we look forward to this hearing. And I jinxed Chad by talking about how fast he could get it up there. So I apologize, Chad. It's my fault. So. All right, we good? All right, thank you. Again, here with our team, they are here tonight to answer questions. Should you have any questions at all, please ask them. Councilman Hanson on the traffic. There is a traffic study that was performed for Phase 1 that we can answer to. Curtis Rowe with Kimley Horn is here to answer any traffic questions should you need them. Again, this is the remaining 188 acres, as Kevin indicated. And as we have discussed for a long time now, the vision of this property is mixed use. So we're going to have six, seven, maybe as many as eight different uses on the remaining property. This is an aerial view of what our vision is and this is a site plan view. It's a little easier to see. We believe up along I-25, south of Floor and Decor, there will be more retail. We think retail will go from Floor and Decor, south all the way to the lake. Going along the lakeside, we're going, we envision higher density, multi-story buildings, potentially even podium style construction. On the east side of the lake, we're working with a very high-end fitness user who wants to build 104,000 square foot facility, outdoor swimming, really the best in class fitness. Along County Road 5, we have other mixed use that will occur there. On the east side of Whitesl, we envision that as residential, potentially multifamily. So I know there's a lot of conversation about a lot of different issues, but this is ultimately, and hopefully what this project will look like when it fully builds out. It won't look exactly like this, but it could be as many as 2 million square feet with eight or nine different types of uses and hopefully be a really big asset to the town of Tinmouth, its residents, to this community, to the region, and add not only revenue, but uses and useful uses in restaurants and places for people to go. This, as I said, I think going back, we were talking about, you know, as many as 20 years ago, potentially longer, the town has looked at annexing the site in red, which is hard to see there, but it says Site Big next to it so that I can see it. So the site is in the growth management area and it is, I believe, an important project and property for the town and for obviously our partnership. So at this point, I will hand it to Carolyn White with Brownstein and she can explain why we're here and I can stop talking.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Town Staff, members of the public. As mentioned, I'm Carolyn White. I'm Land Use Counsel for the applicant and I'm pleased to present to you tonight the rest of, or some more portions of our application for annexation and zoning. This presentation right now, this public hearing that we're in, is annexation and initial zoning. So it's going to, we're going to combine discussion of the annexation and the zoning to the underlying zone district, the RC. And then we have a separate agenda item for you in a little while that will speak to the PD overlay. In terms of what we're doing here, I think that you all know that Phase 1 has already been annexed. In fact, you just approved the final plat for it. These phases were split up in order to accommodate tenant demand and also to be able to phase some of the infrastructure. And as you all know, Whitesl Road connection was also constructed as part of Phase 1. So we're here now tonight to talk about Phase 2 and this is the public hearing on whether or not this application meets the annexation criteria in your code. And just to refresh, you have already made findings that the annexation application does meet the technical criteria in the statute and in your code. That was on January 23rd. The second public hearing, we're going to be focusing on the criteria in your code that have to do with whether or not the annexation is a good idea for the town as opposed to the technical compliance issues. So these are the criteria in the code for annexation. We have already submitted as part of the packet a narrative letter that addresses all of these criteria in some detail. I'm not going to review all of them and I'm not going to review everything that's in the letter. But we do intend to highlight a couple of the key factors that have come up throughout this process as being of great interest to either the citizens or the town and focus on those in our presentation. If you have additional questions beyond that, of course, we're happy to answer them. And as mentioned, our whole team is here and ready to answer those questions. Some of the things we're going to speak about have to do with the positive economic impact on the town, the connectivity and walkability, the conformance with the comprehensive plan, and the zoning of the property in accordance with criteria number seven on this list. So starting first with the comprehensive plan, and again, there, in the letter that we submitted, we talked about nine different goals, 20 different objectives, and four different community needs set forth in the comprehensive plan that would be fulfilled or furthered by this project if it moves forward and is annexed and zoned into the town. A couple of those that we thought worth highlighting at this moment, talking about redevelopment and infrastructure investments to encourage efficient and intentional use of land. And when we talk through the PD overlay here in a little bit, you'll see some of the things that we're trying to do to create, incentivize and encourage creative and efficient use of this land. And I speak of this as a redevelopment because of course there is development on the property today. As was mentioned, it is the site of an asphalt plant and a gravel mining operation. So that technically is development and what's being proposed here is a redevelopment of that property. Some of the other goals and community needs, new commercial and industrial development within appropriate areas to create an economically sustainable community. So appropriate areas, as Grant mentioned, this area has been designated for future growth, for future annexation, and for regional commercial uses in the town's comprehensive plan. For at least 20 years, based on our research, I am given to understand by the Planning Commission that it actually goes back to 1984, but I don't have the 1984 comprehensive plan. And then economically sustainable community, I know that in your packet you have two different economic reports and we're going to present some more data about that economic impact for you in just a few moments. The applicant submitted an economic report and we know the town separately retained a different economic consultant to analyze the data provided by the applicant and reach their conclusions and we'll talk a little bit more about that in just a bit. One of the other criteria is that the proposed annexation will not make it more difficult for other properties to annex. It doesn't, you know, split properties then make it, you know, separate them from the town. So it will certainly not do that. And for one thing, it'll bring all the phases of development within the town so that they can be developed in a uniform way and allows for town master planning and oversight of all of the development within the Ladera project in a uniform way. And of course, we'll present all of these tremendous regional commercial. And of course, we'll present all of these tremendous regional commercial and employment opportunities. So let me turn now to that economic analysis that I mentioned, because that is one of the criteria, and it is one of the goals, that there's a positive economic impact on the town, and ask our consultant, Andy Arnold, to provide a very brief overview of the economic impact analysis provided with this annexation application.
Thank you, Carolyn. Hello, everyone. I believe this is the first time I've been up to Tinmouth to speak with you. My name is Andy Arnold. I'm the founder of Pioneer Development Company. My company, and I'll just do a very brief introduction since this is our first-time meeting. My company works all over the country on economic development projects, doing things like annexation, fiscal impact analysis, public-private partnerships, brownfield redevelopment. Currently in Colorado, I work with 18 cities across the state, and nationwide, we work with about five states. And I was asked to come in to quantify that vision that Grant described to you and that you're seeing in your packet, this vision for Ladera, which is this master plan mixed-use development that's going to feature residential development, it's going to feature commercial development, and a variety of different types of commercial development, not just retail or hospitality, but a mix of all of that. And so what I did, and that's what's in your packet, is we provided a fiscal impact analysis. And what that means is that we really wanted to quantify what that development looked like, how it would be valued by the county assessor, what those future tax revenues would look like, and we looked at a 25-year horizon for that. We looked at property taxes, sales taxes, even lodging tax, because there is a hospitality component to this. And then we also wanted to compare those future tax revenues and this development as it's being proposed to the fiscal impact on the town, specifically the cost of service. So with these new residents and with these new businesses, what would that cost be on an annual basis to Tinmouth? And what would that development generate? And what is that net difference? Because that's very important when you, as a community, are thinking about annexing property and property is being proposed for a certain type of development, you want to know, how does this balance out? You know, with our cost to serve and with what this is going to bring to the table for our community. And my finding is that this is economic sustainability for the town of Tinmouth, that this development, and my first slide right here is just showing you the different product types that Ladera proposes, retail, office, hospitality, the industrial is really storage, but it falls under that light industrial category.
Could I have that on my screen?
Did I knock out your screen, Mayor?
No. I think we're off.
My IT genius went, is that what? Thank you, Brett.
Everything good, Mayor?
It's good.
Thank you. So what I want to talk about right now is the, really, the scale of this development. And so we wanted to do a side-by-side comparison with Tinmouth's existing commercial square footage, which we're really getting from third-party databases like CoStar. This was at quarter three of 2023, where you have about a little over 400,000 square feet of retail space, 25,000 square feet of office space, about 30,000 square feet of industrial space, and compare that to what Ladera is proposing. And you can see it's a large difference. Ladera is proposing over a million square feet of commercial space relative to the town's 481,000 square feet of commercial space. Those percentages are what Ladera is over the town, compared to the town, and then when you bring them together, that total percent increase. So really, what we're talking about is that full buildout, Ladera would represent a 323% increase over what Tinmouth currently has. And I think a really important figure is that retail space, because as you know, retail commercial space is generating retail sales, sales tax, and it's a huge part of your budget. And so you can see how much new retail sales square footage is coming with the Ladera project. I should note that, very simply, if you know nothing else about economic development, know this, commercial development is really what pays the bills for every municipality. Residential development, it's usually a net negative, but hey, people can't, stores can't exist unless you have rooftops, unless you have people living there and buying things. So what's very unique about this development is, even though I work all over the state, I've never seen a development bring this much new commercial space to a town relative to its size. So I think that's a net positive. And the next slide, I'm sorry. Didn't realize I was driving. Thank you. The next slide shows this. So what we did is we looked at that net fiscal surplus and deficit, we looked at the annual revenues. This development, upon full buildout and stabilized, would generate close to $11 million annually to the town's budget. When we look at the expenses of serving not only the commercial space, but all of the residential development that is envisioned for this development, it's $2.9 million annually. So what is that net difference? It's almost $8 million net positive to the town of Tinmouth every single year that this development exists. I should also add that there is a great firm that was a third-party reviewer, EPS, that came in and did another study to evaluate our numbers. Their numbers came in very similar to this. And what I mean by that is our annual, or our net fiscal surplus is looking at just kind of a snapshot in time and stabilization. EPS looked at ongoing net fiscal impact for 25 years. Stabilization, ongoing, it's really just an average. We were saying 7.9 million. EPS came back with about 6.9 million on average. Their ongoing number was 153 million over the next 25 years. So the point I'm trying to make here is that, you know, you don't have to take my word for it, even the third-party consultant is showing a massive net fiscal benefit to the town upon full buildout with the Ladera development. And then finally, just to highlight, this development doesn't just benefit the town, right? The town of Tinmouth does stand to gain a massive amount of fiscal benefit from this development. We're estimating about $219 million, that's property and sales tax. You can see the large sales tax number, $205 million over 25 years. EPS had a range that ran from 210 million to about 151 million. There's reasons for that range, but either way, again, a massive number over 25 years. But your other taxing entities are going to generate revenue from this development. The school district stands to gain over the next 25 years $116 million because of the Ladera development. The fire district, 22 million. The county, 46 million. Even the public library with its small mill levy, $6 million over the next 25 years. So I will just conclude with this, that from a fiscal standpoint, this development represents a significant boost to your town's budgets, and that boost is, I would say, one of the largest ones I've seen in Colorado relative to your population. This is a large commercial development that is largely going to bring in buyers, not just from Tinmouth, and have a great experience for your town, but buyers from elsewhere. And they're going to be spending their dollars here that will resonate in your tax revenue. So thank you with that. I am here to answer any questions you may have. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Andy. So moving on to some of the things we said we were going to highlight, I do want to speak for a moment about connectivity and mobility, and I'm going to take that just a little bit of a step further. By connectivity and mobility isn't just about the trails that are going to be built and the multimodal opportunities and the roadway connections, they're also about co-locating different types of uses next to each other so that you minimize the amount of time that people have to travel to visit different uses, and you minimize the amount of time and distance that people have to travel from their home to their work, their home to their recreation, and so on. And so the underlying theme of Ladera has a lot to do with connectivity and mobility, not just in the physical improvements that are being constructed, but also how it's being laid out and how the different uses are being situated in relation to each other, both in terms of horizontal and vertical integration of different uses. So we talk about the internal streets, sidewalks, and trails of how you're going to get around within Ladera, and also the connections of how you're going to connect from Ladera to the rest of the town and the region. And what we're showing here on the screen is your, an excerpt from your master plan and illustrating how this new development is going to comply with and further some of those goals in the master plan related to connectivity. You actually just saw this graphic in the prior presentation on the final plat, but now we're bringing it all together, Phase One and Phase Two, and showing all the different types of trails and connections that are going to be both internally and externally with Ladera. So here we are at the end of the annexation criteria, and this is the slide listing all the different criteria, and we think that you will agree that our application demonstrates that all these criteria are met. One of those criteria has to do with the zoning of the property occurring concurrently with the annexation, and that is why we are combining annexation and zoning in a single presentation. So I'm going to speak about that component of it next, and that is the underlying zoning to regional commercial. So the land use code requires that when you petition for annexation, you also petition for your zoning at the same time. We are requesting regional commercial. RC is the underlying zoning for this project. It is designated as RC in the comprehensive plan. RC is also the underlying zoning for Ladera Phase One, which you've already annexed. So it's all very consistent with the long-term goals articulated by the town in terms of what type of development it wants to see here. With the zoning criteria, and these are the same criteria for initial zoning and rezoning, so I speak about that interchangeably, this is really initial zoning because the property's not been zoned in the town of Tinmouth before. You don't have to meet all of the criteria, you meet only those which are applicable. And again, I'm not going to speak about all of them, but we've checked on this list, those that are particularly applicable to this project and to this presentation. Rezone or extend the boundary because of changed or changing conditions, really, the changing condition is that you're annexing the property into the town. There's also a changing condition in that the evolution of the current use on the property is nearing its end, and it's time for this property to be put to a different use, hence the redevelopment, and that different use is one that is consistent with your comprehensive plan, redevelopment into regional commercial. Areas changing or has changed to such a degree, it's in the public interest to encourage development or redevelopment, encourage innovative and creative design, and we talk about that in a little bit more detail when we get into the PD overlay discussion. And then also to bring the zoning of the land into conformance with the comprehensive plan, which, as has been mentioned numerous times, and I'll try to stop saying it, but this property has been envisioned in your comprehensive plan as a regional commercial since about 1984, as far as we can tell. So what I'd like to do now is just briefly speak about the current use on the property. This actually doesn't go to any of the annexation criteria, but we know that this question has arisen throughout the pendency of this project, and we know that a lot of folks have a lot of questions about what's going on there now and what would happen if this property is annexed into the town. And so in order to answer those questions and get all that information out on the record, we have asked John Warren, President of Connell Resources, which is a separate and distinct company from Connell LLC that runs the current operation on the site, to come and speak to you just a little bit about what the current permitting situation is, what the current activities are, and what that's going to look like after annexation if you decide to move forward with the annexation. Thanks, John.
As Carolyn stated, my name is John Warren. I'm the President of Connell Resources. I've been part of Connell for nearly 20 years. We are a local, family, and employee-owned, heavy civil general contractor in the area with about a 75-year history in northern Colorado. Tonight, I'm going to speak about our mining and asphalt activities that we refer to as our Tinmouth Connell asphalt pit, and a little bit of the history we have in operating in Tinmouth. Kevin did a really nice job of, I've given a brief overview of the permitting and some of our obligations, but I'll do a little deeper dive on that. So Connell Resources has a Construction Materials 112 Reclamation Permit with the State of Colorado Division of Reclamation, Mining, and Safety, and we've had that since 1999. We also, we serve as the operator of the permit, where Connell LLC is the property owner. Additionally, Connell Resources has a use by special review through Laramore County to operate an asphalt mixing plant, along with the ancillary uses of that. We've had that since 2003. And as I'll discuss over the next few slides, these operations will be decommissioned, and the land currently used for our mining will be reclaimed and repurposed into water storage as well as commercially developable lots. So quickly, I'll spend the majority of my time tonight on the reclamation side of things, but our asphalt plant is a regulated use. The Colorado Department of Public Health has the primary oversight of that. They regulate air quality and water quality on the site, and then Laramore County Health Department works in concert with CDPHD. They perform, they oversee local ordinance, and they also perform physical inspections of our plant and provide additional oversight. All right. It is important to note that none of these obligations under these permits will change or be diminished if the town annexes the property. So regarding our gravel mining, what is a Construction Materials 112 Permit? Our gravel mining operation must comply with the 109-page state regulation, which details multiple requirements of permit operators to ensure that mines are operated in accordance with state statute. These requirements include that the operator establishes a reclamation and a mining plan, and that the operator provide financial guarantees that the reclamation of the mine will occur. The regulations also detail and allow for the reclamation plan to be modified throughout the life of the permit, and that it, and at the end, be modified for the best and highest use of the property owner, and to allow for changes, that allow for changes in the surrounding area. These modifications are outlined in the regulations through a process called a technical revision, and I'll discuss that further later. But touching on a few of the specific regulations throughout the 112, I won't read the whole 109 pages to you. It's long. But Rule 3.1 is a critical piece of it, and within the 112 permit, those regulations outline that the operator, who's Connell Resources, shall work with the landowner, Connell LLC in this case, to choose how the affected mine lands are reclaimed. So in this case, residential, recreation, industrial, commercial, developed water resources are all listed within the regulations, and all are part of the vision that Ladera will bring. Additionally, Rule 4.1, that's about the financial guarantees and warranties. We have posted a performance bond of over $500,000 to ensure that we will reclaim the pit when we're complete. And I think it's important to note here that DRMS Act, they physically come out and inspect us at least annually, and to make sure that our operations are in compliance and that our financial guarantee is still sufficient. Again, this is the process that ensures the town will have no financial risk or oversight obligations related to the reclamation of this property. Connell Resources bears the full financial risk and duty to comply with all the state regulations for the reclamation. Moving on to our history, Carolyn touched on this a little bit, but you look at the initial growth management map of 1984, and when we actually permitted in 1999, the town has designated this area in their growth management area, actually after, or most of it was the commercial use, was after we had already started mining. Mining began in 2001 and has continued since. Our operations obviously aren't new to the property, but at the same time, we are not proposing any additional mining here. Rather, as a result of the annexation, the town's boundary will simply shift to include this property. When the town designated this site for regional commercial in 2002, our operations were already in place. On the bottom of the timeline is also kind of our timeline of how we've revised our reclamation and mining plan throughout the years. We've done it eight times through the division, and I've highlighted Technical Revision 6 as an example to walk through a little bit. So as I mentioned previously, the regulation allows landowners and the operator to modify the mining and reclamation plan throughout the life of the mine operation. The regulations have been crafted to accommodate the evolution of development around the mine. This isn't the first time that development has come to us as a miner. It generally happens this way, and so, again, the statute is built for this. So in our Technical Revision 6, which we submitted to DRMS and was approved in 2021, as shown on the right side of the slide, this is where we reduced the size of the reservoir from our original mining plan and added the Whitesail Road extension. Now, the TR was completed in partnership with the town of Tinmouth, and it was partially a result of the surrounding infrastructure changing. In this case, CDOT decided to abandon the I-25 East Frontage Road, which resulted in a need for a new secondary access to Costco and relief of traffic, the traffic impacts that other development had created at Hermie and Whitesail. And through Phase One of the property, the town has already annexed a portion of our active gravel permit, or active gravel mine, excuse me, which is now where which is now where Weitzel Street right of way is. This right of way bisects the property within our 112 permit boundary. So with this proposed annexation, it's not uncharted territory for the town. And if you recall, the town had no obligations to perform any of the reclamation or oversight of that piece of Weitzel. So to wrap this up for me, Connell Resources, I mean, we've operated and mined and reclaimed 37 permitted gravel mines throughout Wyoming, Colorado. The end land uses for these have been commercial development, water resources, open range land. Many have been within town limits, including Windsor and Loveland. And just to highlight, some of our competitors and other operators currently operate mines in Loveland, Greeley, Evans, Johnstown, Windsor, Millikan. So it's not uncommon. So I'm available to answer any more questions related to this. I appreciate the time, and I'll hand it back to Carolyn.
Just one last point I want to make about that, and that is that Connell Resources is now, has been, and will continue to operate in compliance with all of the applicable regulations, regardless of whether this property is annexed or not. Nothing will change either way in that regard. And the other point that John made that I just want to emphasize, and that is that the town has, in fact, already annexed a portion of property that is within the boundaries of the mining permit, of the 112 permit that John just referenced. One other, just last point that I want to make, and this goes a little bit to some of the public comment that actually happened at the beginning in the general public comment, and that is related to the proposed terms and conditions. In your in your code, it says when you want to annex into the town as part of your annex application, you need to propose to the town any terms and conditions that you would like to see in an annexation agreement that would accompany the annexation. And so we did that with our initial application. We listed a couple of proposed terms and conditions. For example, we asked the town to grant relief from sales tax of materials sold out of the asphalt plant after annexation for a period of time. I think we said five years. We also asked for the right to continue operating the gravel permit explicitly as a vested right instead of just as a nonconforming use like Kevin described at the beginning of the meeting, and a couple of other things. And through the evolution of this application, through the referral and comment process, we received feedback that those proposed terms and conditions were not likely to be well received by the town council, and they were not likely to be recommended by staff. And we did withdraw the request for those terms and conditions to be included in the annexation agreement. And now what you have in your packet tonight to accompany this annexation is the town's form annexation agreement with no deviations or changes. So with that, we have demonstrated that this application meets all the requirements in your code for annexation and for initials of the RC, and we ask for your approval. We look forward to hearing the public comment and to coming back up here to speak with you following that and address any questions or concerns that have been raised. We look forward to answering your questions. And as mentioned, our entire team is here and available to answer any questions that you may have. Thanks for your time and attention to this matter this evening.
Thank you. Any comments for?
I do have questions. I don't know if we want to do public comment first or public hearing first and then do that.
Okay, Melissa.
Okay, I will open the public hearing at 7:22. First up, we have Patrick Groom.
Is it possible to pull up the public comment and the document that we submitted in the public comment?
I don't think we have that prepared to pull up, but there was a copy handed out to council. Well, they received it by email.
The document that was submitted today?
The document that was submitted? They emailed to all of the council members. And then the packet also included the documents that were submitted last week.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Patrick Groom. My address is 822 Seventh Street in Greeley, Colorado 80631. And I'm the attorney representative for three entities, three parties, Timneth Lands LLC, Terra Resource Corporation, and Craig Harrison. My clients are not opposing the annexation based on the area of land included in the annexation petition and the annexation map that's owned by Connell. Well, my client is contesting is the so-called right of way that's included in the annexation petition. Apparently, at the request of staff, the applicant included area that's described as right of way. However, we do not believe that all of that area that's described as right of way is actually right of way. And that becomes legally significant. Under CRS Section 3112107 and the Colorado Constitution, Section 30, Article 2, both of those, the statute and the constitution, require that persons comprising more than 50% of the owners of land to be annexed, excluding public roads, must sign the petition for annexation. The reason is, under Colorado law, parties cannot be forced to annex their property. And so the Colorado Legislature and in our Constitution adopted rules that require more than 50% of the landowners to sign the petition for annexation. Because Connell LLC is the only applicant who signed the petition, if any other landowner owns land within the area to be annexed outside of a public road, whether it's Timneth Lands LLC, whether it's Terra Resource Corporation or Craig Harrison, then the annexation petition should be denied for failure to satisfy Colorado law. Consequently, there are two questions that have to be answered. First, do any landowners besides Connell?
Mr. Groom, you've got 10 more seconds.
I'd request, given the fact that I'm representing three clients, that I have nine minutes. Because the area that's to be annexed includes lands that are owned by those entities that are outside of the right of way. And we explained that in the brief that we submitted. It's not the annexation petition?
Mr. Groom, I'll give you a chance to wrap up.
The annexation petition is not complying with Colorado statute and with the Constitution. And unless it could be demonstrated that the right of way includes that area, then the annexation petition should be denied as a matter of law.
Thank you. Carolyn, do you want to respond right now?
So I agree with the assessment that the Colorado Constitution and the Colorado Municipal Annexation Code do state that the petition for annexation shall be signed by 50% of the property owners and the owners of 50% or more of the 50%, more than 50% of the property and signed by more than 50% of the owners. But it specifically says excluding public right of way. And so I think our staff can speak further about this. But the conclusion upon reviewing the record is that all of the property was either within public right of way or owned by Connell LLC. And we can have more response to that after the public comment.
Okay, thanks. Other people?
Yes. Pardon me if I totally screw up your last name. I can't quite read it. Kristy Brials?
Brials.
Brials? Okay.
Hello, dear Mayor, Town Council, and residents. My name is Kristy Brials, and I serve as the Executive Director of Respite Care. I'm grateful for the recent variances in annexation granted to our nonprofit, allowing us to locate in Timneth. We truly appreciate the warm welcome from the community. It was awesome to see our little lot up there on that first lot. It was awesome. Tonight, I come to respectfully ask for your support in annexing the remaining 184 acres of Ladera into Timneth. This action would expedite the removal of the asphalt plant and allow for concurrent development and reclamation efforts. We believe this is the most sensible and environmentally friendly option for all involved. We're eager to become acquainted with our future neighbors and envision families benefiting from our services living nearby. Additionally, we question why some oppose annexation if it means removing the asphalt plant sooner rather than later, benefiting the health and well-being of Timneth residents. With Connell's expertise in reclamation, we're confident in their ability to safely transform the land while preparing it for redevelopment. Our children, staff, and volunteers at Respite Care eagerly anticipate enjoying outdoor spaces and community field trips that are right outside our doorstep. As Timneth strives to be inclusive, prioritizing the well-being of children and families is paramount. Outdoor spaces are vital for the development and happiness. A vote to annex Ladera shows your dedication to upholding the values of inclusivity and community well-being. It signifies your commitment to a future where Timneth has the autonomy to make decisions that align with the best interests of Timneth and its residents, including Respite Care. Let us begin working collaboratively to build a vibrant, inclusive, and sustainable future for Timneth. Thank you for your time and consideration, and we respectfully ask the council to vote to annex the remaining 184 acres to Ladera. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristy.
Next is Irv Christie.
Good evening. My name is Irv Christie. I live at 5821 River Bluff Drive in Timneth. I'm seeking clarification regarding the management, regulation, and compliance enforcement of the proposed Ladera Annexation Number Three. During the Planning Commission meeting that I attended on January 16th, Mr. Cobles stated the condition of any permitting does not transfer to the town since this is a county process and county approved. He went on to state that the approved uses for resource extraction and any change to this would need to be brought into code compliance. However, following that meeting, we reached out to the county commissioners. And in an email from the Laramie County Commissioner, Attorney Frank Wong, on January 31st, he stated, if the property is annexed, then the town will have jurisdiction, and it'll be up to the town to regulate and enforce issues in the property. So I have two questions as a result of this. First of all, who will actually be responsible to enforce the use of the property if annexed, given the conflicting information? And then second, as I understand the 2003 USR, the USR stated that Connell would use the aggregate mined on the property to avoid hauling the material over county roads. However, the asphalt operation today is requiring resources to be trucked to the site, causing wear and tear on Weitzel and Harmony Roads and adding a traffic congestion. My question is, will Timneth require Connell LLC to submit a new USR to govern the use of the asphalt plant? And will the asphalt plant be allowed to continue to truck offsite material such as gravel, used concrete, and used asphalt into the asphalt plant, even though it was not allowed in the 2003 USR? Thank you.
Thank you. And if you'd like, you can get ahold of Kevin anytime from 8 to 5 and ask him those questions.
Next is Joe Hollenbeck.
Good evening. This nice lady introduced my two letters, but they weren't for general public comment. They were the subject of two agenda items. So if they could be distributed under that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Timneth Planning Commission approved on January 16th, 2020.
Mr. Hollenbeck, could you say your address, please?
4980 West Fifth.
Okay, is that in Timneth?
Yes, it is. Come by anytime.
Pardon?
Come by anytime. It's on the end of Fifth.
Okay.
Okay, my time or yours?
My time.
Okay, put some more on mine then, please. Timneth Planning Commission approved on January 16th a resolution for annexation for property known as Connell Annexation Three. Approval was based on the finding of facts that I believe are incorrect. The Timneth Planning Commission report dated January 16th incorrectly states that the landowner will continue to be responsible for reclamation, and the state holds an escrow deposit to ensure reclamation is completed. The landowner being identified in the application is Connell LLC. The town council report dated February 13th correctly states the mining permit holder will continue to be responsible for reclamation, and the state holds an escrow deposit to ensure that that reclamation is completed. Planning Commission also received the letter summarizing the November 28, 2023 neighborhood meeting related to the subdivision rezoning. The question was asked, when will Connell address the DRMS reclamation plan? Part of the answer stated by the applicant representatives was establishing the requested zoning modifications does not release the requirements of the developer from DRMS. There's no requirement placed on the developer, Connell LLC, by DRMS. Any DRMS requirements are for the permit holder. The Planning Commission approved the annexation rezoning application and PD overlay application based on false information. While the information has now been corrected, the Planning Commission may or may not have approved the applicable resolutions with the corrected facts. The Planning Commission did not recommend approval based on the same facts provided in the respective reports, and the representation that they did is incorrect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Keane?
My name is Don Keane. I I live at 5900 South County Road 5. It's a Fort Collins address, but I'm adjacent. I've been notified of all the issues regarding the property. I'm against the annexation. I'm against the asphalt plant. And I quite, 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 really quite can't understand why the city isn't against or the town isn't against the asphalt plant also. You get nothing out of it. You don't get any tax revenue. It's going to tear up the roads because they haul in all the material. And there's just no benefit to the town to have it. And we don't need it there. This termination of this pit is long overdue. It was to terminate in no later than 2015. And here we are about nine years later. It's still there. And the way I read this thing of what the what the town is letting happen here is that the asphalt plant could be there perpetuity. And who knows if this property will ever develop? I've heard all these all these rosy scenarios, but there's no no proof that it could happen. And the asphalt plant, far as I see, there's no sunset on it by the town at all. It can be there forever. And also, in regard to Tech Technical Revision 6 with the with the DRMS or Department of Minerals and I call them DMR, but that approval does not constitute land use approval because a technical revision does not amend the reclamation plan. And a reclamation plan can be revised with only public, a public hearing and amendment process. And that can only be approved as a developed. And right now, the only approval of the property is a developed water resource. And I had a conversation today with Laramie County. And I talked with Lori Kedrich, Laramie County Assistant Manager. And she told me the USRs do not go away. They stay with the property, They stay with the property, but would be transferred to Timneth. It would be Timneth's responsibility to take care or enforce the USRs on the property itself. And this is not what the planning staff told the Planning Commission. They said that the county's going to come in and still maintain the USRs, but they can't because it's not their jurisdiction. And the...
Mr. Keane, you've got 10 seconds to wrap up.
Well, that's about all I have to say. The one other thing, you know, when the USRs in the pit was approved by Larimer County, they talk about the growth management area since 1984. Well, why was it approved as a water storage area in 1999?
Thank you, Mr. Keane. Thank you.
Mara Johnston, Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Mara Johnson. I live with my husband and son at 6735 Granary Road in Timneth. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of my family and many of my neighbors, whose names are listed on this letter, which I'll share with you for your record. I've heard the criticisms of the Ladera annexation, and I feel that they're without merit. I, as well as many of my neighbors, believe the annexation is critical for our town since it offers a thoughtfully designed project with revenues that can positively, excuse me, impact our community, including support for our local school district and local improvements that are much needed. We firmly believe it's in Timneth's best interest to approve the annexation now, especially since there are absolutely no proven health issues if it's annexed today versus down the road. My family is excited about the businesses and organizations that want to locate here, along with over 100 acres of natural space and bike trails. The thoughtful opportunity to have impactful nonprofits such as Respite Care, as well as options for dining and entertainment, which would keep dollars in our community and provide resources to our neighbors. So many of us are unhappy that because of fears fueled by misinformation, the 1A Initiative is up for a vote. We trust that the professional town staff have done their due diligence and are focused on what is best for all of Timneth. We consistently see these staff members assess these projects in an ethical way, and they're not swayed by the interests of a small number of opposers. Yet, the minority opposition is making the majority of our residents fund a ballot issue and expensive special election using our town's valuable resources for their own agenda and not protecting our community's well-being in the future. The experts have shared that there are no additional health hazards to filling in the gravel pit now compared to doing it simultaneously with grading for development. Plus, we would get rid of that asphalt plant faster instead of waiting until close to the end of this decade. If Timneth annexes now, when the state has signed off, the site will be fully reclaimed, the building of bike paths can begin, and new tenants can receive final approval for their projects. If Ladera is not developed, the residents of Timneth may lose the opportunity for goods and services and critical traffic improvements for this foreseeable future. Without Ladera, the improvements to Hector and Main Street are not triggered. So many of my neighbors are absolutely in favor of annexation occurring now. It's my honor to speak on their behalf tonight, knowing that they have active, busy lives chasing young kiddos and busy careers, and they fully trust in your ability to make the decision that is best for our town. Ladera has been working for over a year to move this project forward. Our town staff and elected officials say the landowners have addressed all of their concerns and confirmed that this project meets all requirements. There's no other answer besides yes, knowing that Ladera has checked all the boxes and met all town, excuse me, conditions for approval. Please vote to annex the remainder of Ladera tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Cave.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the Town Council. I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak and talk about this annexation. I plan to construct and own a mid-scale dual branded hotel in the town of Timneth, and that is within the area of the subdivision that you just approved this evening. It will be the first La Quinta Hawthorne Suites dual brand in Colorado, and it will be located right across from the Floor and Decor project. I envision a future Ladera residents walking or riding their bikes to greet their friends and family who will be staying at my hotel. Furthermore, I'm looking forward to working with the other quality businesses who plan to locate in Ladera. If ballot 1A passes and the annexation ultimately fails, it will be many more years before anything can be built, leaving future development up in the air. I can say that the loss of the Top Golf Center and its potential benefits to my hotel has given me pause. I chose this location as it sits on the northern Colorado's busiest interchanges, complete with a majestic view, existing facilities that already attract people from a large geographic area. In my opinion, the future of the Ladera property can and must be successful and is developed is entirely according to the master plan, which requires the town's approval of the annexation, southern portion of the property. I really object to a handful of people thinking they could control what another person can do with their property. It makes me wonder who is next. The hotel is expected to generate significant fees, property sales, and room taxes for the benefit of the community. Furthermore, the revenue produced by businesses in the new annexation for Ladera will all be shared by the town of Timneth, Larimer County, State of Colorado, and the Metro District. I appeal to the Town Council to listen to their own experts and the citizens and vote for annexation. Timneth deserves this well-thought-out development, and I look forward to being a good neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa.
That's all the public comment we have on this item, so I will close the public hearing at 7:45.
Thank you. Kevin, do you have any final comments?
No, only questions and answers that you guys have.
Okay. Council.
I'm happy to start. My first question is, and I have heard multiple different things about the current county USR regulating the operations on the property. And if we were to annex, do the conditions of those USRs continue, or do they go away? Can anyone answer that question?
It'll probably be a tag team between me and Carolyn. But with it annexing into the town, our interpretation is that the USR, since that was a county approval and it's a county process that doesn't exist within the town, that that USR doesn't apply to the town just because it's an application that doesn't exist within us. So that's where it would become a legal non-conforming use. I don't know if, Carolyn, you want to touch on that a little bit more as well?
So, under the legal non-conforming use, the uses cannot be expanded or changed without any approval of the town and coming into conformance with the town code at that point? And the town code does have provisions in there for resource extraction? And I think it's a... Can you speak to...
It's a conditional use.
The conditional use on RC?
Yeah, Robert's question is more geared towards kind of the more legal nature of the USR permit applying to us that we would have to enforce that USR.
So the use would have to be in legal conformance right now, a legal non-conforming use. It would have to be currently in compliance with the USR. But then, yeah, I don't know that we'd have to keep enforcing the USR.
That's the question that Robert has.
Well, and I suppose you can look at it two ways. Like, do we have the obligation to enforce the USR? Or the flip side is, maybe there are conditions of the USR that we would like to see in place, and we would like to continue.
Yeah, and generally, the original USR, the majority of what the USR did back in 2000, from what I understand with it, was it was more geared towards haul routes, access points, and then a lot of other technical nature of meeting, you know, health and environment standards, some things like that. A lot of that did change with the removal of the I-25 frontage road. That was their primary in and out for the property from that standpoint of that's what they were kind of guaranteed with that. They did amend it back in 2003 because originally it was they had to use a Wellington asphalt plant. They couldn't do an asphalt plant on this property. They amended it in 2003 to then add the use of an asphalt plant. But generally, those were kind of the main parameters behind the original USR was applying with all state criteria, health, PFA, all those, and then kind of geared more towards haul routes and access points. But from our interpretation is that there's not an obligation that we have to continue that USR.
But some of them may continue to apply, like something you have to comply with health code requirements. So the town would become the enforcement authority and the general jurisdiction government? So if they're... So from that standpoint, some of them may, requirements may come under the town's jurisdiction and requirements for use of roads and things like that.
Correct. So it's been asserted tonight, and I don't know if this is true or not. It's been asserted tonight that the USR limits the material traffic coming into the plant. If that's a condition, if we approve this, that sort of restriction would no longer apply. Is that correct?
So actually, Matt behind me actually had a quick view of that resolution. We couldn't find anything in the resolution of the 2003 amendment that said they could not haul material in from that standpoint. That was in the brief resolution of that amended USR, that there's that restriction. So as far as we can tell, there's not a restriction on the hauling in of materials based off of that with the new added use of the asphalt plant in 2003.
But they also would not be able to expand the scope of the use? So if the, you know, whatever scope was limited under there, you know, if they expanded the scope, they would be required to come into compliance with town code.
I appreciate all the questions that were submitted and the responses from the mining regulators, DRMS. I had asked one question about how the bonds work and how we can be certain that the $532,000 bond, dollar bond that's in place now, is sufficient to make sure that that's been reclaimed. And the state says that they inspect and review it annually and annually make sure that the bond is sufficient. And I believe Ms. White, perhaps, or somebody also mentioned that that bond is sufficient. Does anyone know, has that bond changed at all in the last decade, what that history looks like?
Go ahead.
Mayor, thank you, Councilman Oxmaker. Actually, I'd like to ask John Warren to answer that question. And while he's walking up to the podium, just on the questions that you just asked, at least on behalf of the applicant, I want to state for the record that it is the applicant's intention to operate the plant exactly as they have been until such time as we actually get the redevelopment going and to not expand it and to not make any changes. So if that is the town's desire, we are united in that regard and that, you know, we're here asking you permission to build something else there. It's because we want to build something else there, not because we want to keep making asphalt there. Let me let John Warren answer the question specifically about the performance bond.
The performance bond has not been increased, but we have performed a great deal of reclamation to this date, including White Soul Road, all the backfilling of the area around White Soul Road, all of the area along I-25, which is in its final state on the western border. And the bond has never been reduced in essence. So when they've come and done their annual inspection, seen the progress that we've made, we've agreed that the permit and the, or the bond has stayed in place, even though we've done quite a large amount of reclamation already.
So essentially, although inflation may normally increase that number, the amount of reclamation left to be done has decreased, so it kind of balanced out. Is that the...
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
And John, while you're there, there's been some questions asked about the lake. And I know as the technical reviews have changed over the years, the lake has changed sizes and whatnot. Is the size of the lake in technical, that was approved in Technical Review Six, consistent with the proposed lake shown, or will that need another technical review to get that?
No, it is, it is, Technical Revision Six shows the water storage reservoir in the configuration as is shown in the master plan.
If we annex the concrete or the asphalt and mining operations, will that result in tax revenue for the town?
I don't see how it couldn't.
I'm saying directly, yeah. I mean, your operation will continue to operate, but you will now have an obligation to pay our taxes.
Correct.
Okay. And I don't know if this is best for Carolyn White or who, but someone has, had suggested, why don't we subdivide the property, take the stuff that's already been reclaimed, annex that into the town, and the stuff that hasn't been reclaimed, leave that in the county? Can anyone speak to why that would or wouldn't be a good idea?
Well, one reason you probably can't do that is because that's not what we applied for, so that's not the application before you. But if you did that, you'd have a really goofy-looking boundary line, for one thing, because the way that the reclamation has proceeded and will proceed, you know, will correspond to factors other than nice, neat, square property lines. But the other thing I might just add, and I alluded to this in my presentation earlier, and that is, one of the reasons we split this up into two phases and annexed Phase One and then came on to Phase Two was really to be responsive to tenant demand. We brought Phase One in when we knew we had sufficient tenant demand to justify that amount of land and the amount of infrastructure needed to be constructed to support that land. And we're bringing Phase Two in now that we know we have sufficient tenant interest and the ability to support that with infrastructure as well. So, you know, the project is going to progress just as quickly as it possibly can. And even though we think there are going to be multiple phases, those phases might happen in such rapid succession that it looks to the outside eye like a single phase because of the demand.
Thanks, Ms. White.
And then, it was Bob tonight. Kevin, I asked you about this this week as well, but there is two different entities here. There's the mine gravel operator, and then there's the developer applicant. And the bond is held by the mine operator. Does the fact that that bond is held by someone other than developing the property cause us any concern?
No, because I believe Mr. Warren even touched on it, is that, you know, the property owner, it's going to be in their best interest that the property get reclaimed because they can't develop it until that property is reclaimed. So even though it's technically a different entity, the permit holder would still have the responsibility to do the reclamation. And then that's where, if they for some reason walk away from this, that's where the state has that bond, that then they could go out and reclaim it, and then the property owner could then ultimately develop it from that standpoint. So there's not a concern from that standpoint because the developer probably is going to put a lot of pressure on the permit holder to get that property reclaimed to then be able to develop just because they wouldn't be able to otherwise.
Robert, I'd like the rest of the council members to talk.
Sure.
Thanks. Luke, do you have any?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. And Kevin, obviously, the land use code that we're talking about, so in our land use code with the non-conforming uses, and I think Carolyn hit on this with the expansion, how they can't, you know, they can't expand the operations there. So how does the town ensure those provisions are followed as the, as the non-conforming uses?
So if there's any type of expansion typically, that's going to be, you know, building permits or, you know, something along those lines. With it being in the town, they would have to apply to the town for, you know, those types of things. And then that would trigger the known aspect that they are looking to expand the use, which would then require them to come into compliance. You know, if for some reason something does change that we weren't notified about, which, I mean, typically can happen anytime in the town for even someone doing a basement finish without us knowing, that's where code enforcement and our building inspectors do come into play to where as they are driving through, you know, a town doing their daily inspections, if they notice something that hasn't officially been permitted, they, you know, then bring that to attention, which then would trigger that as well. So, you know, there's the good faith that, you know, we rely on every resident and every property in town to notify us of, you know, any change. property in town to notify us of, you know, any changes that they do to their property. But then there's also the code enforcement aspect.
And so I'm assuming that's what you talked about there also applies for the structures as well?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin.
Brett?
I just have a couple of questions for the applicant. What is the anticipated timeline for reclamation of the mine removal of the asphalt plant? You know, what are you hoping for as you develop? Are we looking at?
Who do you want to direct it to?
Whoever from Ladera wants to speak to this. I'm assuming Mr. Warren is the right guy there, but I don't know.
I can give you, there's, there's two pieces to that answer. From, from a statute standpoint, under the, under our 112 permit, we have five years from the expiration of mining activity to reclaim the pit.
Okay.
That time, I, I can tell you from my conversations with the property owner, but they would like to expedite that. But that's based on economic activity. We still have material to mine out of there. We hope to be done with that. I mean, our intent is two years, but again, that could change with economic activity.
Okay.
Is that a fair answer?
So if for some reason we are unable to annex your property, you might take five years to finish up your asphalt and mining operations there. Is that a fair?
Absolutely fair.
Okay, thank you. And I have a question, maybe, maybe Grant, maybe you're the right one for this one. It's a build out questions. What's your anticipated build out timeline for the whole development here for this phase? You give me a range, it's fine.
Sure. I mean, it's, it's, remaining development will probably take 10 to 15 years to build out in reality.
Okay.
You know, to be, you know, our, our projections in our economic analysis were a little more aggressive, but I'm the one who irritates John and Sherri constantly saying, can't you move your batch plan out of the way, please? Because I have users wanting to go there today. So I think the retail will build out faster. Having Walmart and Costco and floor and decor along the corridor attracts a lot of retail.
So would the retail be in that 10-year-ish end of the spectrum?
I think the retail will come first. I think the multifamily is another one. The capital markets today aren't great for it, but there's still a lot of interest that I get on that property. And then the lake is going to take some time to build out, right? We still have a lot of fill to bring in to meet that, the lake size that we have amended back in 2021. So the, the lakeside stuff will take a little bit longer, but the fitness user wants to go as fast as possible. So it's probably, you know, a 10 to at least 15 year horizon, just to be realistic.
And then, I mean, you've spent several years at this point recruiting end users for this, for this development, I assume. And if we were not to annex your property, you'd probably have a number of those individual users walking, you would need to start over at some point if, if this development were to continue down the road. Is that correct?
Yeah, we've got a, we're in a very dynamic market environment right now. As you can see, you know, Loveland attracting Bass Pro and Johnstown is as aggressive a community as, as there is out there in attracting retailers. So I believe we have the best sites and annexation today allows us to capture those users. And if the anchors that we're talking to today can land, we can even land more users and higher quality users, because it will be the place in Norland, Colorado that people are going to want to locate.
Okay. And those are the questions. I guess the, the point I want to make here is to make sure everybody understands is we're looking at essentially getting the full benefit of the commercial here in 2034. And if it takes five years to reclaim the mine because we have to wait, and then several more years to start this whole annexation process over, we're looking at delaying this by six to eight years. So we're talking 2042 before the town would be able to enjoy the full commercial benefits to the, of this development. And I think that's important that people understand that if this annexation were to not go through, or if a ballot measure were to prevent us from being able to do it, we're, we're looking at my grandkids maybe being able to enjoy this, this development. So, thank you. That's, those are my questions.
Thanks. Thank you. Lisa?
I think everybody else asked the questions. I'll have some comments later.
Okay.
I just have one.
Okay. Perfect. I'll, I'll let you have one.
So our ordinance, if we pass this, requests us to find that over 50% of the property owners, or any 50% of property have rights to it with the right of way excluded. And we heard today from Mr. Groom that there's at least a property owner out there that, that feels like we, we don't meet that. So I don't know if this is Eric or who, or Carolyn, but I'd be interested in hearing more about why the town is so confident that, that we have met the requirements there.
I'll speak first and then maybe let their surveyor address anything specifically on their plat. The right of way that has been researched and being annexed and that is shown on the plat, or the annexation plat to be annexed, falls underneath a couple of different methods of obtaining or establishing right of way. The first one goes back to the early 1900s, when right of way was dedicated by a road petition process, specifically to County Route 5, a road petition was asked for and granted in 1903 that obtained tracks that were 60 feet wide from the adjacent property owners. This historic right of way has been referenced in recorded documents since then, as recently as 1986, 1997, 99, I believe, and even Mr. Harrison's own annexation for the Riverbend property referenced this historic right of way. In regards to the historic right of way, and if it's still applicable, in 2021, as a result of a similar claim of interest on a right of way that was attained by petition for Prospect Road, in a court case that was going on, the Supreme Court stated in that case that an individual cannot acquire title, interest, or right of any land, water, water right easement, or other property whatsoever by possession, no matter how long continued, against the state of Colorado or any of its cities or municipalities. Once a dedication of right of way to a city occurs, a defendant no longer can claim a property interest in that same right of way. The court went on and found in favor of Timnuth, saying that the court found that Timnuth, with Larimer County as its predecessor, established a right of way for Prospect Road through a property recorded, properly recorded dedication in 1889. Since that right of way was proper, if they're in the petition process, we're taking that same approach to the 1903 right of way, that it was properly recorded, dedicated, and since it has been neither vacated or changed, it is still historic right of way that is available to the town to annex for right of way purposes. Since that time, today, the road doesn't completely exist in that petition, or petitioned right of way from 1903. And so it falls underneath state statutes that allow for a prescriptive right of way, which is established on roads that have been in use by the public for over 20 years that have not been opposed by the property owner. County Route 5 has been in use for much longer than 20 years. No opposition has ever come up. The county claims the right of way in the position the road currently is. So that is the additional portions of right of way that are being annexed as part of this annexation petition. So we feel both meet state statutes under either petitioned right of way or prescriptive right of way to be eligible as right of way and meet the statutes for that.
Carolyn, do you have anything new to add to that to answer Robert's question?
It's a little bit. So first of all, the, you know, as I stated before, the statutes only require.
New information.
New, okay. So I would say in addition to that, the Colorado Annexation, Municipal Annexation Act actually requires that in establishing the boundaries, it's a quote, "of any area proposed to be annexed, if a portion of the plotted street or alley is annexed, the entire width of such street or alley shall be included within the area to be annexed." So the town actually has a requirement to annex the entire road right of way. And so the town engineers actually looked at what the road right of way was before this application was even submitted and worked with applicants to make sure that the entire right of way was included in the application and has consistently believed that the entire property that's outside of the Connell LLC property is all within public right of way. And there's a lot of support in your record, in your meeting packet as well. There's a letter from Carolyn White, and there is engineering exhibits from the applicant to provide additional documentation to support that all of this is within public right of way. I'll also say that the town has an IGA with Larimer County that also requires the town, when it is annexing, to, to annex the right of way that is adjacent to the property that is being annexed. So the town is required to annex the right of way, and the town engineers feel very comfortable that all of this property is within public right of way.
Thanks, Carolyn. Okay.
Well, first of all, I agree with everything that staff said and that the town attorney said. And I get, the one new thing I would add is certainly from the applicant's perspective, it was not our intention to include anything other than right of way. And we did all kinds of investigations, as summarized in our letter, to ensure that we were not petitioning to annex anything other than Connell LLC owned property and right of way and nothing more. And you can read in great detail, and we do have our surveyor here, if you have any technical questions for him, on how he conducted his analysis in order to conclude that the legal description provided in the annexation petition is only right of way and Connell LLC owned property and nothing else.
Okay. Let's see. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance number seven, series 2024, an ordinance for annexation for a property known as Connell, annexation number three?
I will move to approve ordinance number seven, series 2024, an ordinance for annexation for property known as Connell, annexation three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? I'm going to, I'm going to add a couple of discussion, believe it or not. Robert, you can pound me later.
Discussion is good.
Couple of things. First off, I don't, it's, it's, it's gone quiet because I think the Connell people and the owners of Connell are very humble. They've offered to help Respite Care, which is a great organization nationally known for childcare, to be able to acquire the ground at a cheaper rate, if not better. And so I think they should be commended by us. And that will be our first really nonprofit organization based in Timnuth. And so I personally am very excited about it, and I think we can't do better than Respite Care as an organization. The second thing is, I'm excited about this because finally I can have some shopping that I can do here instead of having to go to Fort Collins. I have, I'm guessing we will have some restaurants. And instead of having to go to Windsor or to Fort Collins to go to a restaurant, we will finally have a restaurant here in our town. And the motel operation, I think having that there so grandkids and kids can come and stay close as opposed to having to reside in Fort Collins is also a great deal. So ignore all the financial, ignore that, and I'm the CPA. There's a whole bunch of benefits that we see, that I see from this. Anybody else want to make comments? Okay?
Sure.
First off, I think the, I am going to vote in favor of this, this annexation tonight. And I mean, I think it's been explained many times, and I don't, I want to make sure I have new information. So, you know, the, the benefits are obvious. Funding of the town's needs and amenities, improvements to the regional roads, as well as all the types of business establishments that I have heard for years and see long before I was even on the council that people in Timnuth want. You know, in the end, the applicant's requesting to do exactly what's in our comprehensive plan, no more, no less. They're not asking to do something crazy, you know, like a, like a tall net or something weird like that. They're, they're just asking to, to do the type of development that the town has said that it wants. I think it can be a serious risk if the town rejects this annexation or is forced to reject this annexation that we can lose this development. Either it stays an asphalt plant or we can lose it to the county. I think that's a, that's a real risk that we could run. And, you know, as an example of a county commercial development, we just looked to Mulberry Corridor and Furniture Row. And, and nothing as a, I'm not intending to be critical or belittling of that area. It's just, I fail to see how that's an improvement over what has been presented tonight. An annexation of this land puts the, the asphalt plant and the, and the mine on a, on the quickest path to closure that we can possibly get. I'm also hopeful this commercial development can support other nearby commercial development. It's essentially around the corner from Old Town. It's down the road from any Harmony, Harmony Corridor stuff. I, I think it can help generate some momentum in other areas of the town as well. I will just address, since it's been raised in some of the, the public comments, you know, some of the wrinkles in this are the legal considerations as well as some of the political considerations with the, the ballot initiative that's going on right now. You know, it's, it's, it's my opinion after conferring with, with legal counsel that the best thing to do from a, from a legal standpoint is that we, we vote on this tonight and that we vote to approve this tonight. And unfortunately, I'm not going to go into all the details of our legal reasonings there. And I, I assume that's understandable to people. But I do think it's unfortunate that I, that I think this ballot initiative has boxed us in a corner in a lot of ways. It, it's limited some of our options, and it is something we kind of warned about when we talked about this back in November. And so for me, what I have to look at is what is the most fair way we can treat people? And what action can we take that best advances the interest of the community, which I think means annexing this property? And then we work to untangle whatever mess we're in from there. And I, and, you know, some of the questions have been raised in terms of why don't we just wait till people can vote on it? And it's because I think the, the reasoning of this initiative is flawed. I think we've shown with statements from all the Colorado regulatory agencies that the town is not going to be impacted adversely by annexing this land. I would specifically refer to the CDRMS statements that are in the packet. You know, my questions were, does the town annexing this piece of property change this Colorado state's regulatory agency's responsibilities? And their answer was, no, it doesn't. And I asked in their experience, does the town need any special legislation to protect us from being responsible for the mines? And they said, no, we don't. And I feel it also necessary to, to point out, you know, so everybody's aware, the town post campaign finance disclosures on all the, the financial, political activities going on in the town. And it's an entertaining read for the group that pushed this initiative. What you have in the Vote Yes Timnuth group is an issue committee registered out of Washington, DC, that has received funding from a coalition of sorts from Pueblo, Colorado, and has paid an LLC based out of Sheridan, Wyoming, to collect signatures for the ballot initiative, an LLC that was formed a couple of weeks before the petition drive started. And, and what that shows to me is that frankly, someone's going to great lengths to hide something. And I, I don't like it. I think it's ugly. And I don't think we should be treating landowners in this way. I, I, I've been very disappointed to see that kind of stuff going on in my town. No, I can't control it, I can't stop it. But it's, it's my hope that the community will understand that this, this, this annexation is good. And from all the input I see, most of the community agrees, even those that are expressing concern or detracting in some way, say they want it to be a successful commercial development, but they have questions, they have concerns. It seems like we're all on the same page of, we want this to work out. So I think a yes vote tonight is, is the step towards helping this work out and not creating obstacles that make it harder for this to work out. So I'm, I'm also excited about what's going to come here. I'm excited for having some amenities and places to eat and shop and hang out with my kids right in Timnuth. So I will be voting yes.
Luke, did you have something?
Yeah. I, I hope it's new, Mark. So, so I just.
I've made my point, haven't I?
So I, I just want to take a moment to share my perspective as a council member, explain why I'll be voting in, in favor of this annexation. One of the considerations is the anticipated sales tax revenue that'd be generated for this project. The additional funding is critical for maintaining and improving our services to town residents. The amenities proposed for the annex area, particularly the restaurants, match the desires of our residents in the 2021 town survey. Supporting this annexation allows us to respond directly Supporting this annexation allows us to respond directly to the preferences expressed by our community, contributing to our residents' overall satisfaction and well-being. The proposed annexation and project aligns with our comprehensive plan targeting commercial and employment land uses. This aligns, this alignment is essential for our responsible sustainable development, ensuring our town grows in accordance with our long-term vision. A critical aspect to me on my decision tonight is the belief that this will contribute to the economic sustainability of our community. We can create a more resilient and prosperous town for current and future generations by fostering commercial activity and job opportunities. In making this decision, I, I've carefully weighed the long-term benefits for our community. And I believe the annexation enables us to respond to the expressed preferences of our residents, fosters economic sustainability, and promotes responsible development.
Robert?
I am actually going to echo some of the comments, Mark, sorry. But as, as you mentioned, as Brett and Luke mentioned, I see so many positives related to this development. That whole I-25 corridor in my mind is, is really set up so that community members within the town, as well as outside of the town, will have resources to go to for restaurants, the, the retail. I'm really excited about that. For anyone who's lived in Timneth for, you know, a little bit of time, I've been here for 12 years now, and when I moved here, it was Walmart, and that was it. And I was really excited when we got our first gas station and, you know, and excited when we got the Costco. And so everything in that area that's been developed, I think this will just be an additional asset to that area. And as you mentioned, having, having Respite Care and nonprofit, having a hotel, things that we don't have right now, in addition to additional restaurants and open space is just really exciting for me, so.
Thank you. All right. Do I? Oh, he came, he said no before.
No, I was-
We should be polite.
I'll, I'll try to keep it brief from there.
Is that possible?
I mean, there are two questions. Should we annex? And if so, should we do it now or should we wait until after the election? With respect to should we annex? Yes, absolutely, we should. This is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's consistent with the vision that's been in place since at least 1984. This development would bring great benefits to the town and allow us to add needed amenities, also increase a tax base, and oddly enough, will increase, right now, there's a mining and asphalt operation that we're not collecting taxes on. And if we annex it, we actually would collect taxes. This land will develop. It's too valuable not to develop, and we want it to develop in this town and not in the county. We want to have oversight for the development. We want the benefit of the taxes of it. Development of this land is likely to speed the reclamation process and transition away from the industrial use that's going on there. And I think everybody, including the proponents of the ballot initiative, would like to see that goal furthered. The question here is not what's best for Timneth today, but, and this is to the point that, that Brett made, you know, what's best for the future of Timneth? We have a choice here to either move forward or to try to hang on to the status quo. And I don't think anyone wants to see the status quo continue on that property. You know, a question was raised as to whether or not the property being annexed is proper. Certainly, the council today needs to make a finding that it's the 50% landowners. And we've heard folks speak today that the land that's being requested to be annexed either belongs to Connell/Ladera or is right of way. We need to rely on our town experts, our town engineers. We have a sworn affidavit by a surveyor, all of which suggests that that's all the town is annexing here today. And, and so, well, legal issues can always be debated. You know, from, from what I've heard and read, I, I don't believe that that question of, of property ownership is sufficient enough for us to hold this up. So I, I, I do think annexing this property makes sense. The question is, do we do it now or do we wait two months, as some have suggested? And I'm encouraging the, the council to act now and to approve it at this time. Although we do have this pending citizen initiative, this council has already spoken in unanimous, unanimous voice in its opposition to that resolution, that proposed initiative. Not that we disagree with the aim, which is to have the property reclaimed, but that there are concerns about the way that if the petition were to pass, that it would negatively impact our town, that it would keep us from having oversight of that property, that it would actually delay reclamation, and that it would expose the town to legal liability. And so, you know, I, I know there are times when it makes sense to say, let's wait and see how, how the public's going to come out. But in this one, I, I think the choice is so clear, the, the council's already spoken unanimously, that it would be unfair to the applicant to delay this any further. And so I will be voting yes as well.
Okay. All those in favor of the ordinance number seven, series 2024, an ordinance for annexation for property known as Connell, annexation three, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ordinance number seven, series 2024, an ordinance for the annexation for property known as Connell, annexation three, passed unanimously. Six B, ordinance six eight, series 2024, an ordinance for the zoning map amendment for the property as Connell, annexation number three, to the town of Timneth. Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just as Carolyn White had also talked about, this is just the base zoning for the property to be regional commercial in compliance with that comprehensive plan designation of employment and regional commercial. So that's all that this action is right now, is for that base zoning to be regional commercial. That's all I got on that one.
You need to talk to Robert. I couldn't help myself, sorry.
And I'd like to incorporate into this public hearing the comments that were made previously by the applicant and by the town staff and by the public. We're also going to have a public hearing on this item as well, but I do want to incorporate that prior, those prior comments.
Great.
Okay. So Melissa, public hearing.
I will open the public hearing for item H. No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay. Does anybody wish to speak? Okay.
I will open it at 8:27 and close it at 8:27.
All right. Discussion. Okay. Do I have a motion for ordinance number eight, series 2024, an ordinance for the zoning map amendment of the property known as Connell, annexation three, to the town of Timneth?
I move to approve ordinance number eight, series 2024, ordinance for the zoning map amendment of the property known as Connell, annexation three, to the town of Timneth.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Where, where'd Luke go?
Step away.
You gotta time it right.
He thought Robert would have a few more comments. Sorry, Robert. We've, we've been here three and a half hours, you know how it goes.
We're starting to get slap happy. All right. All those in favor of ordinance number eight, series 2024, an ordinance for the zoning map amendment of the property known as Connell, annexation three, to the town of Timneth, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance number eight passed unanimously. Ordinance number nine, series 2024, an ordinance for the Ladera Phase Two Plan Development Overlay, Kevin?
Fun continues. So thank you, Mayor. Chad's pulling up. So as you mentioned, this is a, a application for the, for a PD overlay for what's now known as the, the Phase Two Annexation. So we just went though for, basically through that first one of annexation and zoning, this is now calling, falling into the PD overlay requirement within the steps of the development process. This slide is a little hard to, to read, but I'll give the high level and then we can kind of touch on individual ones that you all may have comments on. These were also in your packet from that standpoint. So within this PD overlay, the applicant is basically requesting to do an identical PD overlay with their amended, that was done back at the end of last year, for Phase Two of the development with some additional changes. So the additional changes that they are requesting are related to uses such as mixed use or multifamily dwellings, maximum lot coverage, floor area ratio within certain portions of the property. So if you had noticed, there was planning areas that they had called out for. So on certain areas of the property, that's where the floor area ratio is only applicable, applicable to. And then setbacks, heights, parking lot design, building form and materials, some site landscaping, open space requirements, planting standards and maintenance, parking requirements, and then signage. And as I mentioned, the exact ones were listed in your packet as well. One of the sections that the applicant has proposed, changing for the parking ratios, is restaurants both standard and then fast food with drive-through. Originally, the applicant had requested that on standard restaurants, the change of the criteria from one per hundred square feet of building plus one per 200 square foot of outdoor seating to end up being seven and a half per thousand square feet. That was an addition, that was an initial ask of a reduction of 25%. And then the, the same would have been for a fast food restaurant. Since their initial ask and planning commission's concerns, the applicant did reach out to staff, and they were good with not having any reduction for parking on restaurants with drive-through or their generic commercial business retail use that they had asked for. But they are actually asking for a change in the outdoor seating requirement for parking to be from one per 200 to one per 800 square feet of outdoor space. Staff actually is comfortable with that modification. We did kind of a little bit of research up and down the front range for other municipalities and how they calculate restaurants. A majority of them did not include outdoor seating as one of their square footage requirements. There were some that did. There were some that actually required more parking than what we do. So since we were kind of a little bit different in terms of the outdoor seating, and after further discussion, a one per 800 for outdoor seating would still be applicable just based off of the number of parking spaces that this development would end up needing to do over a portion or in, over the period of time of this development from that standpoint. So with that, Planning Commission did hear this application on their January 16th meeting. They did approve by a four-one vote with a condition, with two conditions. One was, as I mentioned, the removal of the parking reduction from that. That was agreed upon by the applicant, but with the change that I just mentioned of the outdoor seating. And then only allowing the use of kennel to be limited to planning areas one, two, and three, which are generally all the mixed-use area and retail commercial, and not have it be within residential. With that, I will turn it over to Grant Nelson for their presentation.
Thank you, Kevin. Wow, Chad's on it. Thank you, Chad. Again, thank you for your time tonight. This is the PD overlay. Hopefully, this is new information, Mr. Mayor. Again, we have our team here to answer the questions that you will have on the PD overlay. The project area is the project area of the 188 acres that we have just been discussing. It is the same vision that we talked about earlier. But this is really where the, you know, where the details come in, which Robert might appreciate. Kevin, Matt, Steve Weens, and our team spent a lot of time going through your code. And while it seems like we made a lot of changes, I don't know that at the end of the day, there weren't a lot of changes. The code just needed a good debate, and the only one bigger and more stubborn than me is Kevin. So again, this is the, this is the master plan. He agrees with me, see? So again, while we're here, I'm going to hand it off to Ms. White, who can explain why we're here, because I can't do that. I can, but she does a better job.
I think the applicant team's getting a little punchy here. Thank you, Mayor, Council, members of town staff, members of the public. And we are here to present the PD overlay, which, as I alluded to earlier, is the customization of the zoning for this project. And I, I won't repeat anything that I've already covered. I do want to speak for just a moment about why a PD overlay? Why are we proposing to do this? And, and, and that question has come up a little bit in the public comment. Well, geez, well, can't you just, you know, design your project to comply with one of the underlying zone districts that are already in the code? Well, PD overlay actually is already in the code. It is one of the choices that an applicant can make for how to request zoning for their property. And the PD overlay is specifically designed to accommodate situations for larger-scale, high-quality, master-plan developments. And that's exactly what Ladera is. It is all three of those things. It's large-scale, it's high-quality, and it's master-planned. And it also says that a PD overlay is for the town encouraging innovative land use and building design that integrates well within the community and promotes a positive community image. In exchange, in the PD overlay, for deviating from certain town or code restrictions and providing greater flexibility of design or intensity of development, the town expects a PD development to protect and conserve critical resources, provide a significant amount of open space and recreational amenities, and integrate uses that are compatible both internally to the site and externally. And that's exactly what is proposed for Ladera. That's exactly what we've done here with this design. The PD overlay district is therefore precisely appropriate for Ladera for these reasons. Ladera will be innovative, high-quality, master-plan development with a mix of commercial, office, recreational, and residential uses, all within one property. We will conserve resources, maximize open space and recreational amenities, and integrate a wide mix of uses. I think that Kevin already summarized and Grant already alluded to, why did we need to deviate from some of the code requirements? We're going to highlight a couple of those, hopefully, in a, in a, in a rapid fashion. But really quickly, the, the, oh, here's, this slide goes with what I just said. And the legal criteria that we have to meet here and that you are going to be finding, this is what you have to find in order to approve a PD overlay. Unified character, no adverse effects on public health, safety, and welfare, adequate utilities, no substantial impairment to the appropriate use or development of adjacent properties, no significant traffic issues, and ultimately, the development results in a more efficient project that will contain innovative and creative development. We do have a letter in the packet that explains in great detail how it meets each of these criteria. So I won't repeat all of that now, but Grant's going to come back to the podium now and highlight just a, just a handful of some of the key things that we're proposing to do a little differently in this PD overlay that we think will foster creative and innovative development and make it possible to attract and retain all of those great retail users that he alluded to earlier.
Thank you, Carolyn. Again, I'll, I'll go through these quickly, but we were, we did spend a lot of time debating individual words down to the code. So in the residential section, I think the only changes we really made was from a shall to a should in four different locations. So, and, and part of this is, is the ability then to us go attract quality developers, quality multifamily developers and retail developers, retail being one of the uses. We changed three different things within the use chain, use category. Rehabilitation centers, nursing care, they're very prevalent these days, you know, not like Betty Ford, but the, the, the ability for people to go rehab after surgeries is what we're thinking will be attractive here. There's, we had a debate with part of the Planning Commission on the kennel, but this is not a outdoor kennel. There's just a lot of users now, and there's a lot of people who take their dogs to a daycare every day. And it's a use that we may want, it may, as you may, may not want, but we thought it would be worth putting it in here in case it does come down the, in, becomes a potential. And then the third was just wireless communication facility. So we've, we are approached on a quite regular basis- So we've got to track, we are approached on a quite regular basis by wireless providers who want to put up cell towers. Would be nothing like what is up by Costco. These are much smaller relay towers and actually facilitates Wi-Fi throughout the community. We had a long discussion about sound. What we are, our vision is, is that within the retail planning area one and the planning area along the lake and planning area two, there could be outdoor music on the patios, ability for, for restaurants to have, you know, people playing guitar or some music outside. So instead of it being restricted to 100 feet from the property line, we made it 200 feet. So it's not expanding it greatly, just a little bit to give more flexibility for the end users. Up against I-25, it probably will not bother anyone unless you're in a convertible maybe. But signs, we did put in a provision for signs. So instead of having multiple monument signs up and down the highway, which I don't believe anyone likes, we have proposed one monument sign with an LCD reader board. This is a mock-up of the sign. In no way do we expect this to be approved unless Kevin wants to right now. But this is a vision of what it could look like. But again, it will be just one sign. All of the users will then take time on that sign so that we don't have, you know, a multitude of signs going up and down I-25. Dimensionally, just because the multifamily, you know, the residential piece is going to be by itself, we reduce some of the setbacks. Within the planning area two, up against the lake, we've asked for a 75-foot height limit so that we can, again, as I mentioned earlier, but somewhat more dense product type here. It goes along with the FAR, which is the next slide. This is a 1.5 FAR as opposed to a 0.5, again, to hopefully entice some, you know, podium style developers or vertical developers to come and build a very unique product within Timneth along the lake edge facing Long's Peak. The 75 feet, and this one is just about the easiest slide I've ever seen to read, just kidding, but it's, there's I-25 on the far left, County Road 5 on the far right. And it's what is intended to display 75 feet over that wide of a property is not going to be a very high structure within the, the fabric of the community and within the visual corridor. Forms, one of the pieces that we, the Ladera has undertaken is a design guideline for our development. And one of the pieces that we have found attracted to is a metal surface as known as weathered steel. And this is an example of weathered steel. Currently, the town code does not allow for metal to be used as a surface, and we've asked for a change so that this weathered steel can be used within the, within the development. And staff, I believe, has read our, has a copy of our design guidelines, and this is one of the, the changes we agreed upon. The design detail within phase one, if you're a smaller retailer, I believe it's under 10,000 square feet, you have to do 25% of the, of the frontage has to have a design detail in a larger format. It's, it's 15% of your frontage has to, has to have a unique design detail. The parking, which Kevin alluded to earlier, one of the pieces Carolyn discussed was efficient design. And the parking is really a, an evolving science. When I started doing retail in 1982, five space, five spaces per 1,000 square feet of retail was the absolute locked-in standard. Over the years, it has dropped to four and a half to four. Some retailers do three and a half per thousand so that you're a more efficient use of the land. So we have, we have made some proposals, spent a lot of time with Kevin and, and Matt discussing them. And as Kevin indicated, we are now in agreement on all the parking codes that we have proposed within this PD overlay. The PD overlay also has the efficient, innovative, and creative design. We believe that we do this, you've seen this now three times, we've used it. So I probably don't need to spend too much more time on it. And then just the PD overlay, we have adequate utilities. And so far, this has been a very civil intensive job, and we do have, we have a very complex civil setup on the project. But we are, we will continue that and make sure that all of the lots have adequate utilities. At this point, I will stop talking and hand it over to Curtis Rowe, who's our traffic engineer, who can talk about the traffic impacts and road improvements.
Thanks, Grant. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Curtis Rowe with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. I'm a traffic engineer. Good to see you all again. As noted with phase one, obviously, there were significant improvements that have already been constructed and are open, which include the construction of Whitesell Street down to County Road 5. That provides a second north-south corridor to connect to Harmony Road. In addition to that, the County Road 5 intersection improvements, which include turn lanes at that intersection with Whitesell, the new Whitesell intersection there at that location, and then the roundabout. Although the roundabout wasn't necessary for this phase of development, it was something that was constructed, which provide traffic improvements for the Costco Retail Center. And so those are improvements that are done already as part of phase one. There are future improvements proposed and planned as part of this phase as well. Some of those include the expansion of County Road 5 along Project Frontage. Obviously, County Road 5 is a very major regional corridor as identified in the transportation master plan. And so improvements that relate to that will be conducted as part of that, including also signalization of the Kecta Road and County Road 5 intersection, and then additional improvements on Harmony Road. And so we prepared a traffic impact study for this project. And as we did with that, we found that there, there will be no significant traffic issues with this development, along with the improvements that are proposed and recommended. All of that will contribute to traffic working well with this full development project in the future. And so as shown in the traffic study, the project will not burden the town's roads nor result in any significant traffic issues. And so with that, now I'll turn this back over to Carolyn White, who will conclude with an overview of how project satisfies each of the PD overlay legal criteria. Thank you.
Mayor, Town Council, Town Staff, once again, just to wrap it up here, as you've heard, this application for a PD overlay meets all of the criteria for a PD overlay. And I won't go through them all in great detail, but I do want to mention a couple things. For example, one of the criteria relates to not having adverse impacts on adjacent properties. And for example, as you see, although we are requesting that part of the project be allowed to have a greater height limit than would otherwise be allowed under the underlying zoning, the portion of that project that that is limited to is centrally located in the middle of the project. And so when you get as far away as the property boundaries and the properties on the other sides of it, you will see from that graphic that Grant displayed that actually the visual impact will be very mitigated and you, you won't have much visual impact at all from allowing greater height. One of the benefits of having a very large master planned community is that you can accommodate greater intensity and greater height and greater density in certain areas with minimal impact by how you distribute them and how you locate them on the site. So that's an example of one of the ways in which the proposed changes in the standards will provide a more efficient use of land and also minimize impacts on adjacent properties. Also, you heard from Curtis Rowe about not creating adverse impacts on traffic. As you heard, phase one of Ladera has already provided a significant improvement that enhances the network within the region, and additional improvements will be forthcoming as the project evolves. And ultimately, all of these changes taken together will create the opportunity for a more efficient, innovative, and creative development. The mixed-use nature of Ladera is unlike anything else that's developed in Timneth today. And it's also unlike, it's the largest sort of major master planned opportunity in Timneth adjacent to a major highway. And so it really creates this very unique opportunity to create that draw and that attractive place and that innovative design that's going to look totally different than anything that's already developed in this corridor right now. So with that, we ask for your approval of the PD overlay zoning application, and we have our whole team here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you for your time and attention.
Kevin, you got anything more?
The only thing that I'd add, Mayor, is that, as I'd mentioned, since there was a change to the parking reduction request, there would be a different recommended motion, which we can go over at that point just because it's going to change since the first reading, since the applicant had withdrawn some of their requests. So when we get to that, we can go through a new motion from that standpoint.
Okay. Anybody here have questions?
This is a public hearing, too.
Excuse me?
It's a public hearing, Mayor.
Oh, okay. Would you call it?
Yes. I will call the public hearing to order at 8:49. I have Joe Hollenbeck.
I'm Joe Hollenbeck. I live at 4980 West Fifth and Timneth, and you are still welcome to come by anytime. Timneth Land Use Code prohibits certain uses in a PD overlay district. Article 3.2.2 specifically states that overlay districts are established to prohibit uses allowed in the underlying base district where they may, where they may be inappropriate. And thus, where overlay districts exist and there is a conflict between the requirements or uses specified between the overlay and the underlying district, the standards of the overlaying district shall prevail. Land Use Code, Article 4.3.2 clearly states, "In no case shall any use be permitted in a PD district that is not allowed in any residential or mixed-use district as designated in Article 3." The language in no case is clear and not able to be interpreted variously. The code doesn't say in no case except for variance, in no case except for council approval, in no case except for applicant's mittles, or in no case except for staff recommendations. It says in no case and means in no case, by no means, not under any circumstances, never. In no case applies to variances and everything else in the code. Variances can't be used to make an end run around Article 4.3.2. Any uses proposed by applicant not allowed in a PD district should be denied. Required denials for this applicant's mittel include, but are not limited to applicant's ID number six, bars, taverns, and nightclubs, number seven kennel, number eight wireless telecommunications. The town should abide by the code and in no case allowing any use in a PD district that is not allowed in any residential or mixed-use district. Thank you.
Kevin, would you like to respond?
So 3.2.2, the sentence right before the one that Mr. Hollenbeck read also does state that the PD overlay district is established to provide for certain additional requirements and to permit uses not otherwise permitted in the underlying base district. So it does both. It allows for the allowance of uses that aren't otherwise listed and to also prohibit uses that could be applicable to be restricted as well. So the PD overlay does, in our code, does state that as well. The other one that he does reference is talks about planned mixed-use districts. So those are intended to be a PD overlay on a mixed-use district, so residential mixed-use, commercial mixed-use, base zoning district. That's the way staff has interpreted it for the last seven years that this code has existed is that one of the sentences prior does say for a planned mixed-use district. So that's what that one is intended, is that in a mixed-use district, you shouldn't allow uses that aren't allowed in any other mixed-use or residential district. So that's been our interpretation of that for the last seven years.
And I can speak to that real quick, too. As to the 4.3.2, again, the entire section was not read. A previous sentence to that same section says overlay districts that are not listed in the table, overlay districts are not listed in the table since uses allowed are governed by the underlying district. In this case, the underlying, lying district is regional commercial. That was your last zoning approval. And so I also read it as the restriction where uses are not permitted, they are not allowed in residential or mixed-use districts only applies to planned mixed-use district and not in a PD overlay district. And in a PD overlay, it is the underlying uses in the underlying district that are allowed.
Okay.
Jim Gross?
Comments? Excuse me?
I still have one other.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Jim Gross?
Thank you, Mayor, council members, staff, applicants. My name is Jim Gross. I'm at 6746 Stone Point Drive, and I'd like to talk a little bit about the height issue. I appreciate that the applicants have talked about the comprehensive plan, and they've tried to meet all of the comprehensive planned measures. I assume that when, in fact, the comprehensive plan was put into place, that there were items that were in there which were like the cityscape of what we wanted Timneth to be like. And looking at the code, it's 40 feet is what we're looking at. And if we recall that within this same development, that we had talked about the hotel, and the hotel was had much discussion about 65 feet in height. And now the new applicant is for 75 feet coming in, which is another floor, so to speak, in there. I love Ladera. I think Ladera is going to do everything it can for our town, can provide for our town, and total support of it. But I don't think that that is where we want to go, almost doubling our height requirement from 40 to 75. So I would ask that the council look at reducing that amount or eliminating that amount for this development. And one final thing, it looked like in the presentation of it, they were wanting, they were saying it was for a couple buildings, but those were not identified that it was. And it could be, if it's accepted, that could be 75 feet for that whole area that would be there. So thank you. I appreciate it, and thank you for developing.
I will close the public hearing at 8:56.
Okay, thanks. Discussion or questions or comments?
I have a question. So Carolyn, this kind of follows up with what you were saying. So I have the, the land use code in front of me, and so I'm going based on, in the peach color, sorry, I know you all can't see this, but on the peach color, which is the business commercial, RC would be the regional commercial. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So kennels are not allowed based on that. And then same with the communications piece. Are you interpreting this as the part that you read earlier, Kevin, giving us permission to do that, even though, I agree, it very clearly states, the restaurants actually are allowed based on the land use code for regional commercial, but the kennels and the telecommunications very clearly, in my opinion, says not allowed? Can you describe what that discrepancy would be?
Yeah, so it is prohibited, and that's where I was reading that section 322 where it says overlay districts are to permit uses not otherwise permitted in the underlying base district. So that's what this PD overlay is doing on those two uses, is permitting them since they are otherwise not permitted.
So why do we have this chart in here? Why would it not say? Because some of the other things in here do say conditional use permitted with conditions, but this very much does say not allowed. So I just, I very much understand where that comment comes from because I would interpret it that same way. So just kind of throwing that out there to see what you all say.
So, I mean, okay, so when I quoted the, you have to read those two sections together. So the second that said that permitted uses are the underlying zoning, zoning district, that is the case, except, then you go back to the 3.2.2 that says you can add additional uses by the PD overlay. So the PD overlay is asking to make exceptions to the code requirements that would otherwise apply. And so the applicants are asking you to make an exception to allow that to be permitted use. It is different than the conditional use. A conditional use, they would still have to come in on a case-by-case basis and make an application for that particular use. Once it is just a permitted Once it is just a permitted use, it's an allowable use. So you do have discretion to determine whether you want to allow them to add that as a use for this property.
Could I make a suggestion for the next time when, I know we look at the land use code, it gets updated. In this chart, I would suggest somewhere on here it says something to the effect of, you know, where it lists all the P equals permitted without conditions. If we can somehow have something in there, because I do think that, I would be drawn to the chart more than I would be to the language that's written. So just something to, next time that we look at the land use code, if that's something that we could look at. To put something in there, like where all those, the upper left-hand corner of the chart saying PD overlays are exempt from this, or something so that people who just pull up the chart would know.
Yeah, and they're not necessarily exempt because it's only the ones where you specifically add them as an additional permitted use. But we will see if there's a way to clarify it. Maybe it's just saying, you know, except as otherwise added as a PD overlay because the PD overlay is asking for exceptions to what this chart says.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that section does say they aren't, the overlay districts aren't listed in the table because they are specific. And our zoning map does reference the base zoning and that there is a PD overlay on that property. So if an end user was coming forward, they would be able to find that PD overlay from that standpoint because it would also be recorded against the property. So any end user would be able to find that as well. So we do mention it. It would just be, since we have multiple PD overlays within the town, it'd be hard to distinguish each different one in that table.
Thank you.
On that topic, I agree with Mr. Hollenbeck that our language is open to multiple interpretations. And I think his interpretation is a reasonable one. I think our staff's longstanding interpretation is also reasonable and makes sense practically. But I would like us to look at how we can revise and clarify that at our next land use update.
Yep.
Kevin, with respect to the kennels, is this the only mechanism that we could use? I'm not necessarily opposed to a kennel on the property, but I'd like to, if someone came forward, you'll see what the specifics of that are. You know, do we not have this in the PD overlay and still have it allowed as some other, you know, some other, it goes through some process to later get approved?
So it wouldn't need a waiver criteria from that standpoint because those are generally related to, you know, structure widths and depths, setback requirements, open space, slot coverage, some things like that. So it really wouldn't even fall under a waiver criteria. And a variance criteria is more if there's a physical hardship on the property. So it wouldn't fall into any other category that we have within our code currently on, you know, granting that use on a specific basis. So right now, this is really our only mechanism for that change.
Okay. A quick comment on traffic. I really appreciate the stuff that Ladera has already done to develop the area with Whitezel and the roundabout. But I do remain highly skeptical about traffic in the area. And just, you know, that's something that I really ask staff to keep an eye on, especially as we start looking at users with potentially notorious high-traffic volume. It's getting late, so I guess I'll just bring up my one concern, which is blanket approval of the 75-foot height. I appreciate the point that it's in the middle of the property and that from a sightline perspective, it's really just like a smaller building closer to the edge. I get that concept. But we did spend a considerable amount of time, you know, talking about a hotel and 65 feet. I don't know that I'm personally comfortable right now, tonight, signing off on 75 feet. I might be more comfortable with something like 60. But my question is if we did something like 60 and then they came to us with a specific, hey, here's the plan, you know, we really want to sell it. Is there a way that we could potentially approve that in the future?
Yeah, so the first phase PD overlay actually has the 65 feet as was, as what was mentioned for the hotel. So there's at least 65 feet on, you know, from that standpoint. We do have a provision within the code for a 15% increase at the request, you know, and that would have to be approved by you all as council. You know, if there was an individual that would come, you know, forward that would need higher than 60 or even 65 feet, you know, based off the first phase, that there would be an avenue potentially for that from that standpoint. The reason for the 75 feet is due to the nature of a mixed-use building. The intent in, the 75 feet is only specific to Phase or Planning Area 2 within the property. So not Planning Area 1, Planning Area 3, or residential. It's just specific to that one location. So it's not a blanket over the entirety of Phase 2, but just that specific location. Because that's where they have those mixed use. They're intending for mixed-use buildings to where first floors retail, to where typically those ceiling heights are taller. You can get up to, you know, 15, 20 feet depending on, you know, how they go. Then with, you know, office and potentially residential above it. So when you start to get, you know, that base first floor with that retail higher, then the subsequent floors do, you know, fall a little bit higher as well, especially with 11-foot floor spacing on residential multifamily type that goes above it. So that was the intent of the 75 feet. But to your point, we, you know, do have that 15% allowance as a request within our code.
And I'd appreciate any comment from the applicant, but I guess, and also the thought of council, but I'd be inclined to have Phase 2 match Phase 1 in that respect.
Okay.
I'm going to put my two bits in because that's my only comment, too, is I think I agree. I, not I think, I agree with Robert on it. We spent a long time talking about height limitations. It's a little disappointing that now it shows up when we already have dealt with it before. So, you know, having to repeat myself isn't something that I enjoy doing. So I totally agree with Robert on that.
So the 75 feet?
You weren't, you do not have the floor grant.
Okay. I thought he asked if I, he wanted to hear from me.
Okay.
Do you want to hear from me now?
Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. So the 65 feet is in one location. It is only on the hotel and on the hotel alone. And it was to allow for four stories so that the Hawthorne could have two stories and the Keentah could have two stories, basically. The 75, the extra 10 feet is for an additional 10 feet to allow for elevator chases, to allow for the projections that come up. And it is really to attract the podium-style developers to come to Timneth and want to be, to develop in this site. If you have 65 feet or 60, it's less than what they want. And then they have to judge whether or not the council is willing to grant that extra 10 feet. It's not a product type that is prevalent in Northern Colorado or even present today. So it's a stretch for us to get someone to come to Northern Colorado to want to do this type of development. So offering 75 feet to them today is an enticement to say, hey, this is a community that wants to see this. It's, and it is exactly what Kevin described, the podium style. The bottom floor where the retail will be, hopefully really good restaurants, is 15 to sometimes 20 feet. So that takes up that extra 10 feet. So you're losing, you know, height in the first floor, which means your density in the upper floors goes down. And the cap of 75 feet keeps that, you know, keeps you squished down. So I'm not a podium-style developer. I've studied it greatly to try and understand it. And the 75 feet is what they look for. So it's why we ask for it, and we're not trying to be egregious. We're not trying to ask for it all over the site. We're only looking for it in that one area where the FAR is also higher. So we appreciate your consideration. And again, I'm not, we're not trying to have it over, blanket over the whole site just in one area that we can attract people to come do a really high-end development. So appreciate your time. Thank you for that, Grant. And I guess my position remains, I'd be open to it in a specific instance, but I'm hesitant to grant it just with a stroke of a pen tonight.
Lisa? Okay, Brett?
I guess I'll in general agree that it seems a little premature. You know, the podium-style development seems interesting. As you mentioned, it's not something common to the area, so we don't all know anything about it. And so it seems a little premature to automatically grant 75 feet. It seems like something that could be brought to the council again as another amendment to this PD overlay, I assume, Kevin, at some point in the future. So I would be in favor of matching 65 feet, matching with, or I guess, what do we say on that? 60, 65? 65 is just the hotel. Were you just pushing for 60 or?
You know, I threw out 60. Kevin mentioned that we did the hotel at 65, but that was a special exemption. What's?
I mean, I guess if you do 65, we have the?
What's the Phase 1 rule right now generally? Is it the 40?
It's the 40 with the specific area being the 65 feet for the hotel, which would be similar to this.
And with a 65, we've got the 15% that gets you up to 74. So hopefully one foot wouldn't preclude somebody. I don't know. But, okay, so are we thinking 65 then is what you're proposing instead of 75, or you want 40?
We talked into 60 or 65. I'm not beholden to 40.
Okay.
I'm okay with some deviation, but 75 is too tall.
Okay. Kevin, I think every, just about every development proposal I've voted on, there's generally a legal provision about how does this impact neighboring properties and things of that nature. So, I mean, I think there would be a legal grounds for the council to reject a development proposal that just, that a wall of high buildings, right? We could say, well, this is too much of an impact to the sightlines or the residential next to it. Or, so we would still have an avenue. And this isn't just a blanket, yeah, you could do whatever you want at this height. Like, we still have various layers of protection in our code. Is that?
Yeah, there's other requirements on the application types that talk about, you know, as you mentioned, adjacent properties and impacts to that. There are that and other application types within the code.
Okay. I guess just the one comment, well, a couple of quick comments I'll make will be, first off, I really want to thank staff for all their work on these PD overlays. I know they go through a lot of work to hold the developers' feet to the fire, not, no pressure meant on our applicants. But, you know, it's why so many of our development proposals end up getting approved when they get to this point because our council is so vigorous and following the direction of the council and the policy of the council so that by the time things get to this point, in general, we're able to hit a point where we're, where we can be satisfied. I'll emphasize as well the point about concerns about traffic. And I like that we're being very thoughtful in that, where there is where we don't feel like we're ready to give parking reductions or areas, I believe you think we were, that were data-based. I would suggest that it also needs to not be, when we look at these parking situations, it needs to not also just be the parking capacity. But again, the through lanes of, you know, it's no good if you're funneling all 400 cars of a parking lot into an area that can handle 20 cars at a time. I think that's a big part of what we ran into with Walmart. It's not the shortage of parking lots for Walmart. It's the, how the traffic is funneled in that parking lot. So I really hope we're taking a look at that. I'm sure future councils will continue to press as we get more specific site plans and whatnot. And yeah, I'm generally also in favor of the parking, of the planning commission's recommendations as far as which aspects of this PD overlay to remove. And I've been given, I think, that amended motion, suggested amended motion so I can make that in addition to the 65-foot change when we get to that point.
Keep it new. I would say that I think 65 feet would be appropriate. And I do like the fact that things can change in time.
I don't, listen up. So if you say 65 feet, are we granting staff the ability to increase to 15%? So now you're at 75.
The 15% has to come to the council, right?
Yeah, it's a request that council has to approve.
Thank you.
And if someone wants more than 50%, it's just a flat. No, you don't get to ask it, but they can ask the council for up to 15%.
Okay.
And then also just for clarification, we're not authorizing 65 feet for the whole property. It's 40 feet for the whole property and 65 in Planning Area 2, correct?
Correct. That would also have to be, I think Grant just gave me the head nod that they'd be good with that as well.
Okay. Luke, did you have anything more?
Everybody good?
Okay. I know you've got some amendments there, Grant, so would you make the motion?
That makes sense, Brett. Yeah, if I get it wrong, you'll correct me. I'll move to recommend approval of the Ladera Phase 2 Planned Development Overlay with the following conditions: Removal of the parking reduction for business, commercial, retail uses. Removal of the parking reduction for restaurants, standard, and fast food without drive-through restaurants with drive-through with the exception that the standard for outdoor seating be modified from 1 per 200 square feet to 1 per 800 square feet. Remove the use of a kennel, or the use of a kennel be limited to planning areas 1, 2, and 3. The height in Planning Area 2 be limited to 65 feet and allow staff to work with the owner-applicant to address minor non-substantive modifications and unresolved comments prior to final signatures.
Okay.
Good job. Do I have a second?
Second?
Discussion? All those in favor of ordinance number nine, Series 2024, and ordinance for the Ladera Phase 2 Planned Development Overlay as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ordinance number nine, Series 2024, and ordinance for the Ladera Phase 2 Planned Development Overlay is approved with amendments. Resolution number 20, Series 2024, a resolution approving the Kecter Road and Main Street right-of-way and bridge improvement and reimbursement agreement. Carolyn?
Thank you. So you have before you a proposed agreement that is an agreement between three parties, the town, Connell LLC, and the Ladera Business Improvement District, which you remember is an existing public business improvement district that was previously approved by the town that currently incorporates some of the commercial property in Ladera Phase 1. And I'll walk you through some of the main points of this agreement. First of all, to address the public comment, this is not a condition of approval of the annexation. This had to be approved after the annexation so that the town, so that the property would be within the town and the town would then have jurisdiction to want to enter into this agreement. So we started out by looking at the requirements of what the developer has to build in the town's existing code. And the developer is responsible for improving the roads that are adjacent to the property that we just annexed the Ladera Phase 2, which would be Kecter Road and County Road 5, also known as Main Street, adjacent to the property. Under the town's master traffic plan, these roads are to be ultimately built out to four-lane roads, and that would then be the developer's obligation. We then looked at proposals for financing these improvements and how they would get accomplished. And what this agreement agrees to is, first of all, that the Business Improvement District is the one that's going to actually be doing some of the construction of the public improvements because there may be ultimately multiple pad-site owners and the Business Improvement District will incorporate all of the commercial property in Ladera Phase 1 and Ladera Phase 2 ultimately. Now, the Business Improvement District could contract that out to the developer if they chose to, but they, you know, they would ultimately have that obligation. The first obligation that they're going to build is a traffic light at Kecter Road and County Road 5. And that one is the first, one of the first obligations that's going to be built, which would be 18 months required to be constructed within 18 months after this agreement becomes effective. The second thing that they're going to construct are the improvements to Kecter Road. And the third one is Main Street from the lower boundary of the property up at Kecter all the way up through Whitezel. And then the town agreed that the town will be the one to construct other improvements that are related to this development, namely a replacement bridge over Puda River and the portion of- and the portion of Main Street from that replacement bridge over the Pouda River to the Whitesell intersection with Main Street and Whitesell. Now, the reason why the town would like to undertake the design and construction of those portions are because the replacement bridge is something that is really primarily a town improvement, though the developer will be contributing to some of those costs. And secondly, the design of the replacement bridge influences the design of the road. So the bridge can be oversized, and if it is expanded, then they'll need less flood control improvements on the portion of Main Street from the bridge to the intersection with Whitesell Street. So it made sense to do those as a combined project that the town would undertake the design and construction with reimbursement of portions from the developer. The other improvements that the developer or that the Business Improvement District is going to construct are required to be constructed on timeframes that are related to the and triggered by the development. So they need to be constructed either within 10 years of when this agreement becomes effective, whichever becomes earlier, or two years after the sales tax generating property within an area that's kind of the densest retail development area that's shown in Exhibit A, when 65% of the sales tax generating property in that area has received certificate of occupancy, two years after that date, those improvements need to be constructed to Kecter Road and to the southern portion of Main Street. Or 75% after, or two years after 75% of all commercial square footage receives their CO, except for fitness. Okay. Let's see. The way the costs are split is the town is going to reimburse the developer for a portion of the improvements, or well, reimburse the bid for a portion of the improvements that are constructed by the bid. And those are the portions of the improvements that are related to properties other than the subject property that's being developed. So under the land use code, the property owner can be reimbursed by the owner on the opposite side of the street for the through lanes on the opposite side of the street. And so those improvements, reimbursements would be 75% of the traffic signal. 50% of the ultimate improvements to Kecter Road and Main Street would be reimbursed by the town if the whole four lanes are built out. And let's see. There's also a requirement that when those triggers happen, that those improvements have to be constructed. If the Business Improvement District does not yet have enough money, the owner of that retail develop and the developer of that retail property portion will be required to advance the funds to the Business Improvement District to construct those improvements. The town will also be reimbursed for a portion of the improvements that it will be constructing, specifically 5% of the cost of that replacement bridge over the Pouda River other than optional aesthetic upgrades, plus 25% of the design and construction of any road expansion that is for the purposes of reducing flood control improvements downstream on the remainder of Main Street, plus 50% of the upgrade improvements at Main Street, 37 and a half percent of the flood improvements that are needed to Main Street. And that's related to the portion of the flood that is of floodwater that's been determined by the town engineers to be estimated to be associated with the subject property and 100% of optional additional items such as, not optional, but additional items such as sidewalks, utilities, landscaping, et cetera. Okay, now, the primary purpose, primary source of revenue to pay for this will be a public improvement fee covenant that will be imposed upon the property. Now, a PIF covenant is a development, developer imposed covenant that runs with the land and requires payment of a fee. It is not a tax. It is not imposed by the town or directly collected by the town. And this agreement provides that the covenant will require payment of one half of a percent on sales and services in the subject property, being all of Ladera Phase One, except for floor and decor, and Ladera Phase Two for where commercial development occurs. The town can review and comment on the PIF covenant to make sure it's in compliance with this requirement, this agreement. And all money paid for the PIF covenant will be immediately pledged, put into an escrow account and reimbursed to either the developer, the Business Improvement District, or the town in roughly the order that we expect the improvements to be built. So the agreement sets forth the order of those improvements. So first, the money would be put towards the traffic signal on the bridge, then to the improvements that the Business Improvement District will be constructing. So Kecter and the southern portion of Main Street, and then to the additional town built improvements. This agreement does not waive any impact fees. The developer is still required to pay road impact fees. The developer and these road improvements are required to comply with all town standards, including the Lucas standards. This only relates to the who constructs and designs, who pays for the improvements, and the timing for construction of improvements. But all of the technical standards will continue to apply. And one other requirement is that the town will be responsible for acquiring any rights of way that are needed if any additional rights of way are needed in construction with the, in connection with the construction. And that's the summary. Kevin, anything to add?
I can answer questions. She hit, she pretty much hit on all of it, but I can answer questions for you.
Okay. Questions?
I've got some questions, Mayor.
Go ahead.
So in here, we talk about a 3% admin fee for the town. Can you help me understand how we got to the 3%? And is that standard? Is that something we charge in other projects? So how did we get to the 3%?
Lisa, do you want to come up and help?
It'll be a combo. So the 3% admin fee is an additional fee for taking on the responsibility of doing the full design of County Road Five north of Whitesell, which, you know, the town would normally not do. So that would normally be the responsible, you know, responsibility of any other developer with an adjacent road. But since, as Carolyn had mentioned, that road will ultimately tie in with our bridge improvements for that bridge over the Pouda River for County Road Five. It just made more of an economical sense to have the town do the entire design just because of making sure everything transitions and the design works from that standpoint. So just because we're taking on that ultimate design from the south of the bridge down to Whitesell, we've added on a 3% admin fee as kind of that additional fee to take on that responsibility of work. And we kind of got to 3% just because I think maybe Lisa can touch on that a little bit more. But we got to 3% is it's a little bit lower than a standard fee that would normally be charged, but it's still a significant amount of fee that we would be able to recoup town staff time towards that design.
On most of our IGAs, when we're dealing with pass through administrative fees, we charge 3 or 3.33% on for administrative costs.
Thank you, Lisa. So just to make sure I understand, Carolyn, the 0.05%. If there's any changes to that, is that both up and down that has to come through town council? Or is that just up?
The agreement provides that the amount of the public improvement fee for this traffic improvement would be 0.5. So up or down would come to this town. Now note that the developer could have their own public improvement fee, but that as to this public improvement fee, it would be one half of a percent.
Okay. Thank you. And and I guess the, if I understood correctly, the 75% of the interim signal, interim signal project would be the town responsibility. Is that correct?
That is correct. The only reason why it's 75% is typically on any other signal, it's split into quarters. So each corner of the property, whoever owns each corner would contribute a quarter of that cost. Since the, this property is only one quarter of that signal, the other being, you know, on the other side would be CYO. And then the other two sides are undeveloped at this time. To get that signal in, we can't wait and rely on other properties to develop in the future and contribute. So that's where we are, and we've agreed that we would contribute the other 75% for those other three corners, just to get this signal done.
Thanks, Kevin. And I guess last, last question, we talk about this escrow account. I think we've talked about this in the past, Carolyn. Do, is there some sort of an audit? I know open records, we saw that in the agreement, kind of looking through that. So from that perspective, does that BID, do you know, have to go through some kind of an audit for the state or those type of things to ensure proper accounting of all the funds?
I think it might depend on what their, what their annual budget is and what, whether they have any loan agreements. If they end up having financing, their lender will probably require them to have annual audits. But if they don't, then it's, you know, you could have an audit exemption if you're under a half million dollars. And then there's a higher trigger for, there's like a small audit exemption and a higher audit exemption. So it really depends on what their annual budget is. But they are required to make reports to the town as to how much money is coming in and coming out. And you do have a right to inspect their records. In addition, remember, the Business Improvement District comes to the town every year with a budget that is approved by the town.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Carolyn, I think it's, it makes sense for you to be clear on the fact that the town does not have control of the bid and that, I mean, go ahead. I don't need to explain at all.
The bid is an entirely independent governmental entity of the state of Colorado. And the town did approve organization of the Ladera Business Improvement District and the operating plan. The Business Improvement District is required to substantially comply with the operating plan. So if they have any changes, they have to come back to the council for approval of those changes. They come back to council for approval of an annual budget. But other than that, they are entirely independent. And so that's why, that's one of the reasons why the PIF money is put into an escrow account. And one of the provisions is that if there's a default where the PIF doesn't pay you what they're supposed to, then the town does have a right to require distribution of those funds from the escrow account.
I just want to reiterate what you were saying about the PIF. Carolyn and I have talked about this, and we get comments quite often from community members asking why we are implementing a new tax, which, one, it's not a tax. And second, it's not us who are implementing this. So the Business Improvement District has the right legally to do that. And that is not something that council or our town is responsible for. So.
Or authorizes.
Or authorizes.
Yeah. And to be even more specific, it's actually the developer, the owner of the property that puts it, records a covenant on the property, just like an HOA covenant can put restrictions on the permitted uses of the property. This puts a restriction on permitted uses of the property that says if you have retail sales or services, you are required to pay this fee. So it's actually the owner that puts this covenant in place. And then they're required to pledge that money and then remit that money to the Business Improvement District, which will then distribute it to the parties that are owed reimbursements.
So when development is simple, you have property and there's a road, and we make the developer build the road. And then we try to get 50% back from the adjacent property owner when they develop. This one is complicated because the adjacent property owner probably won't develop soon. It's complicated because the road's in the flood plain, which means its construction is more expensive. And it's complicated because we have this bridge that's not associated with the property, but traffic to and from the property will utilize the bridge, right? Is that a fair summation?
Correct.
So with that, can you tell me why 5% on the bridge makes sense? And why 37 and a half percent on the, the road itself makes sense as opposed to a 50 50?
So the 5% for the bridge is, the bridge isn't necessarily the requirement of this development. The bridge is actually in our capital improvement plan for, in a couple of years. It needs to be replaced either way. So if this development doesn't go either way, that bridge has to be improved no matter what. It's not basically in relation to this development. So just because this development also is contributing, you know, some traffic to that bridge, based off of their traffic study, they, you know, have pledged to contribute funds to the bridge, even though it is, you know, it is a town project as we have taken on in our CIP. So they've at least, you know, come to the table and pledged some, you know, resources to help with the cost of the, the bridge from that standpoint. I'll let Eric also kind of chime in on the 37 and a half percent to where he can kick me when I'm wrong. But so the way we looked at the, the 37 and a half percent is for the length of road that needs to be improved from Whitesell all the way up to the bridge, this property actually only consists of about 75% of that length of road. So we took that measure and did, and did the 50% from that standpoint at the 37 and a half percent. So there's portion of the road that needs to be constructed that's not adjacent to this property as was normally standard by code. So since only about 75% of this property is, that's where we then went back to the normal standard of 50% of the 75%. Eric, you can correct me where I was wrong.
You did good.
There we go. I'm not an engineer by trade. I don't play, I don't pretend to be.
And the only clarification I have is that for a portion, for the majority of the road improvements, we're considering the upgrade road improvements, they, that cost is split 50 50. And in addition to the 50 50 split, if there's any turn lanes or acceleration or deceleration lanes into the property, that is also paid for by the Business Improvement District as a developer cost. It's only the extra cost to, that are needed to put in the flood control improvements that are split 37% to 63.2.
I guess I'll just mention, I appreciate the contingency that was put in. If development is slow and the PIF doesn't cover expenses upfront, that, that rolls back to the bid, correct?
Yeah. Are you talking about the 85 15 split? Yeah. We did put that contingency in as, as essentially a town backstop that, you know, if there's, you know, insufficient funds, there's at least the 15% from the beginning that we could draw upon to help supplement some of those funds.
I'm going to make a comment because if anybody was watching me or Brett very closely, they probably noticed that we weren't totally attuned, and this is a really important agreement. The reason we weren't was we were appointed by this council to go ahead and assist in the development of this agreement and discuss it with all parties. And in fact, I spent two hours before this meeting with one of the lawyer consultants to just make sure I understood and he felt comfortable with everything that was going on. And we had extra help with, from Carolyn. And so I just want you to know that I spent 20, 25 hours going through this thing in meetings and, and reading. And Brett may have even spent more. So we, we, we were focused, just not now, because it's a repeat of everything we've heard before.
No repeat. I got it. I'll add on a couple of thoughts here. You know, as Robert mentioned, you know, not only is it unlikely that the other sides of the street are going to develop, I, I think we hope they don't. I mean, one of them is the Colorado Youth Outdoors. That's the south side of Kecter there, and the other one's a, a private ranch. And I don't think everybody's in a rush to have the ranch go away and have other development there. So, you know, this, this moves us forward towards this critical road project. It's near Harmony I-25. And it really is the developer putting their money where their mouth is. You know, we've heard all these grand promises about they're going to bring us all this sales tax revenue. Well, this is the mechanism that, that shows they, they really mean it. Because, you know, so I'm really grateful for staff's significant efforts from, from many, many individuals to help put together an agreement that is, that really is a big win for the town. And I think it's fair to the developer, because I don't think it would have been fair to require them to pay 100% of the costs of the road with the hope that maybe in 50 years, when that ranch gets developed, that, that they might get reimbursed something. You know, it's a road that we need, the town needs. And, you know, with the PIF, I mean, no, I don't really love. And, you know, with the PIF, I mean, no, I don't really love PIFs and things of that nature, but we are putting a significant financial burden on them with our requirements. You know, they've got to come up with millions, maybe tens of millions of dollars, and they need a way to pay for that. And if it's not going to be through a PIF, it's going to be through increased prices of some sort, you know, and the, and the businesses that they try to attract, it'll be harder to attract businesses, but those businesses will have to pay more to get in there because they need to pay for this road. Frankly, the PIF is, is the most transparent way of, of paying for this. And it's focused on those that are actually using the development the most, that are, that are going, and going to be using these roads the most, that are going to be a part of contributing to finance these improvements over the next decade. So I'm really grateful for everybody's efforts with this. And, and it really is, it's just a great agreement for the town. So that's all I have to like add.
Okay. Excuse me. Anything further, Kevin?
I'm good.
Okay. Find my notes. Do I have a motion for Resolution Number 20?
Move to approve Resolution Number 20, series 2024, resolution approving the Kecter Road and Main Street right-of-way and bridge improvement and reimbursement agreement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 20, series 2024, a resolution approving Kecter Road and Main Street right-of-way and bridge improvement and reimbursement agreement, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution Number 20, series 2024, a resolution approving Kecter Road, the Main Street right-of-way, and bridge improvement and reimbursement agreement pass unanimously. Hopefully, no one has further business.
I think we set a record today.
I know, we did. All of my good short meetings just shot the hack. All right. Anything? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.